Here please.
You have any questions for you?
Mr. City Attorney, can you please report?
Yes. Item four point one on the City Council Agenda for six o'clock. Conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation to matters. On matter number one, in closed session, the City Council heard the status of this possible litigation. The council unanimously provided direction to the city attorney. There's no further reportable action at this time. Matter number two, in closed session, the City Council heard the facts and circumstances surrounding this possible litigation, gave unanimous direction to the city manager and city attorney. There's no further reportable action at this time. That concludes the closed session. Agenda, Your Honor.
Okay. So then we can go ahead and close out the six o'clock meeting. We've got about two minutes here on the clock, and I think two people need to take a break, and then we'll start the seven o'clock meeting, okay? All right, so six o'clock special meeting is adjourned, and we'll be right- We're gonna go ahead and get started. All right, we'll call the meeting to order, please. And I would like, I got some Cub Scouts here that I already alerted to. Can I get you gentlemen up here? And what, what pack is that? Six nine five?
Six nine five.
Okay. And you guys are gonna, we're gonna do the pledge of allegiance, okay? And then we'll get everybody to stand, and then when we're done, we're gonna have a moment of silence, because we've had a couple of people, big wigs in our community here that have been very involved, and that passed away in the last couple of weeks. So we're gonna give some thought to Aida O'Connor. We had Mr. Wayne Huffmeyer, he was, he just passed away the other day from the Lions Club. Cessie Tomenche as well, from the Sister Cities. And Herb Wire, longtime coach with the school districts, and a lot of kids knew him. So we're gonna go ahead and we'll give a moment of silence in their honor, and we'll close the meeting tonight in our honor as well. And we'll also wanna give a thought for our service people out there, our troops that are deployed, okay? All right, everybody good on that? All right, so gentlemen, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna go ahead and everybody's gonna stand, and then we're gonna turn it over to you, and you go ahead and lead us in a pledge of allegiance, and then we'll do a moment of silence at the end, okay?
A pledge of allegiance-
To the flag-
-of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. Now guys, you're pack six nine five, right?
Yeah.
Okay, where do you meet?
Palm Dale United Methodist Church.
Palm Dale United Methodist Church, what night?
Friday night.
Friday nights? Good. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Ladies and gentlemen, that's our future, right there. Good job, guys. Okay, City Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Hoffauer.
Here.
Mayor Porton Bishop.
Here.
Councilmember Benton Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Correa.
Here.
Councilmember Loa.
Here.
You have a form.
Thank you. All right. I've got a bunch of extra papers here I gotta wrangle. We're gonna do a couple presentations. All right, so, too much volume here. So we've got the Animal Control Center here this evening, and what we do is, we like to bring them out and have them- Have them bring out a puppy. So that we can, so that we can try to get these shelters empty. I like to refer to this as our homeless dogs, okay? And we gotta get a spot for these homeless dogs. And we've been doing pretty good here. Jesse reports back that usually within a couple of days of bringing these guys in, that we end up getting them adopted out. So we've been doing really good. We need to empty these shelters out, so they don't have to put any of these dogs down to make room for the other ones. It's just not fair to the dogs. And so Jesse, you wanna tell us about who we have here this evening? And I'm gonna pet him, okay? All right. What's his name?
Choco.
Choco.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight I have Choco with me. Choco is a pit bull Labrador Retriever mix. He's four years old. He came to the shelter on, well, for the second time, on the thirty first of August. He is really, really friendly. He seems to be housebroken, which is a good thing. He's really good on the leash. Right now he let me into the building, because he wanted to get out of the humidity out there. But, oh, very smart dog. He's a love bug. He loves to give hugs, and he just likes to cuddle. From what I've seen with him in the yard, playing around, he kinda just likes to hang around with you. So a couch potato is right here. You know, he'll, yeah, he'll go on his walks with you and everything, but I think he'll prefer to couch more often. He's got all his shots. He's been already altered, and he's been chipped. So he is ready to go home and just lay on your sofa, let you pet him all night long. Bye, buddy.
All right. So, let's keep that in mind here, that there's Choco's here, and he's got a lot of friends over there. They all need some help. And Kerry? Where Kerry go? We still doing a program, or they got a goodie bag?
Yes, they do.
Okay, so all you have to do is, after you adopt, after you adopt them, is then you contact Kerry over here, and the city has a goodie bag for you to kinda help out, help you out with the, and reward you for bringing one of the doggies home here, huh? Okay? All right, so, guys, see Jesse, and I gotta tell you something. Let's give Jesse a hand. These volunteers over there, they work their tails off with their circle. Good. Okay. Jesse and I both grew up in Chicago, so, yeah. That's it. Okay, Choco, you're gonna probably go home now, huh? You're a pretty dog. Pretty dog. All right. Thanks, Jesse. Okay. Okay, so, I have, we have the Juneteenth Committee. I have Juanetta Colors, James Brooks, Glenis Mason, V. Jesse Smith, and Jerry Holmes. Could we get you to come down? And, let's see what we got here. So we'll go over in this side, because John takes a better picture on this side. All right, so, so we had the Juneteenth production over here in Ponce de Long Square. A bunch of us were out there. It was great. It was a great family event. It was very well attended. And again, we have a situation, we have a lot of people that worked really hard, and are working hard for the community, to make something good happen for the community. So I'm gonna let Juanetta put you on the spot, and I'm gonna let you go ahead and tell us just a little bit about this.
So this was our first year, actually, having Juneteenth in Palmdale, and it was open to the whole community. We had over fifty vendors, and we had music for, how many hours was that? All day. Sounded beautiful, was a great family event, and we're really excited to partner with the city of Palmdale. We've already confirmed our date for this year, July twentieth. So we're looking forward to partnering, and we invite the community to come out and celebrate Independence with us with Juneteenth in two thousand twenty. And this is the committee that put it all together.
You go ahead and introduce them, because you know their idols.
I'll actually let them introduce themselves, because everybody, you know, are self-sufficient, and there are leaders in the community as well, so you can put a face with the name, who they are.
I'm James Brooks. I was in the entertainment committee, and we put together the entertainment for the day.
I'm Juanetta Colors. I guess I was kind of like the chairperson, and I am the executive director for the Wildflower Project.
Jerry Holmes. I basically was a part of the music part, and we had a car show there also. So I wasn't responsible for being a part of that, with the music aspect of it. I've been here forever. Forever. Some of those, that's like my mom right there. I remember back in the day, her husband used to get on, that's because we were real small. So, you know, family, I'm one of the ones that used to get on.
You probably had it coming too, I'll bet. Jesse?
I'm V. Jesse Smith, pastor to the city of Palmdale, planning commissioner as well, part of the Juneteenth Committee, and I helped put together the workshops for the committee. And it was quite exciting, and thank you all for coming, those participated.
I'm Glenis Mason. I was in charge of the vendors. We had awesome vendors. We're gonna have even more next year. We had a wide variety, and I'm just a community member that wants to help out wherever she can.
You all did a great job, and we've got certificates of recognition. In recognition of the successful annual Juneteenth, your spirit, drive, and hard work are an inspiration to the community. The city of Palmdale is pleased to extend this expression of our appreciation to you for your dedication to our community. So I've got one here for Juanetta, and James. One for you, sir. And Glenis. And Jesse. And Jerry. Okay, guys, wanna come down and get a picture here? Let's give them a hand. The Juneteenth is done together. It doesn't feel like each other's back.
All your paparazzis right here, so look this way.
You all good? Here we go. Wait, wait. Good. Thank you so much. We're looking forward to doing it next year, and we'll, well, I'm sure we're gonna pull you into something else at the same time. Thanks a lot. All right. Laura, can you come on down here with me for this? So I'm gonna ask our sheriff, crime analyst, FBI class treasurer, or whatever it was, to help me with this one, to, as a declaration, a proclamation for National Preparedness Month. I think the city clerk has something for us here. And who's gonna accept this for us? We're gonna have maybe the fire chief, and Ann, maybe we can get our ranking sheriff. Come on, get in the picture. You show up, we're gonna get a picture with you. Just don't hang out on a wall there. All right, Ann, you wanna tell us a little bit about this? Ann?
So annually, this is a nationwide effort of declaring September, yeah, September, National Preparedness Month, and is an effort to recognize those in the field that work on a daily basis, working on making sure that our cities are prepared to, prepare for and respond to and recover from any kind of disaster. And so today, we are going to be recognizing that in the city of Palmdale, with coming up this month in September. As part of our community outreach efforts, the city neighborhood services staff, along with our emergency services coordinator, the sheriff's department, fire department, and Edwards Air Force Base, are going to be doing their annual preparedness symposium workshop that's open to the public. It's gonna be here, right in this room, on September eleventh at seven PM. Additionally, staff will be conducting another preparedness workshop at Legacy Commons, targeting the senior members of our community. And that's going to be September seventeenth at nine AM over at Legacy Commons. And then coming up in October will also be the Great Shakeout. Being that we've recently had a little bit of earthquake activity in our area, that sometimes a, you know, a little bit of shaking is a good wake-up call and a good reminder to all of us, to make sure that we're working on our personal preparedness. And the city of Palmdale certainly is gonna be participating in that, and we encourage all of you to take some time to make sure you and your families are prepared as well. Turn it over to our fire chief, to see if he has anything to add.
Thank you, Ann. Appreciate it, and for the recognition for the, being prepared as we all try and do. Also coming up here is the nine eleven, it's that time. Can't believe it's been so many, year after year, it comes up really quick, but at September eleventh, out at the Palmdale, at the mall, we're gonna be having a memorial out there. We'd love to see everybody out there. And again, greatly appreciated, again, to the mayor, at nine AM, tomorrow, at nine AM on nine eleven. And thank you again to everybody for this proclamation. Appreciate it.
Okay, so, the whole, the whole idea here, ladies and gentlemen, is to start thinking about, you know, being prepared. Have those supplies at your home. Come into the different forums that we're having here, and Legacy Commons that Ann mentioned. Some of the churches are doing them as well. And, you know, be ready. You're gonna have to be ready. Figure seventy-two hours, you're gonna be kinda on your own. You have the cert teams and things like that out there, but, but it's really incumbent upon each one of us to make sure that our families are ready when this happens, you know? Because it's not a matter of if, it's just when. I mean, just ask the guys up in Ridgecrest what they thought, and it happened, so. And I know China Lake is going through a lot of recovery up there as well right now. So think about it, and, you know, that's it. John, you good on that, or do you wanna do anything else? Pumping up your gun here. Okay, thanks. Okay, so let me give that to... Oh, we good? Do we have any other paparazzi here? Did he sneak in? Uh-oh. Well, snooze, you lose. Snooze, you lose. Yeah, Photoshop. No, you know what? Whereas, 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 therefore. You know, the whole idea again is, be prepared. I think everybody said everything that's on here, and you got any questions about it? We've got a bunch of Boy Scouts here. What's the, what's the scout, what's the motto? Be prepared, right? Okay. All right, thank you very much. Ann, you wanna do something significant with that, okay? Thanks. Thanks very much. This is-
Good evening, everyone. First, I wanna thank the council and staff for preparing this proclamation in honor of National Hispanic Heritage Month. It is something that we need to start doing. We know that we're a very diverse community, but sometimes we forget to recognize the diversity that we have. There is National Heritage Hispanic Month this month, September. There is African-American Month in February, and I think that those are things that we're gonna start to be recognizing in the council. And for this proclamation, I invited three leaders in the community to accept the proclamation. Mr. Felix, Felix from Salva, if you could please come up here. Jorge Núñez. And Javier, would you join us here and accept this proclamation? Mr. Javier Flores with Lulac.
Again, thanks, everybody, staff and council, for having this proclamation in recognition of Septiembre Mesa de la Hispanidad. Mr. Mayor.
So, it also helps us if the members of the community, sometimes this stuff slips by, or we find out about it a little bit late, and we don't want that to happen. So it's really important for us to, to help understand each other's culture and background, and the only way we do that is by talking about it, and, and being able to mingle with one another, spend that time to help better understand, because the better we understand each other, the better, better neighbors we all are, right? So anyways, anything else to add to that, sir?
No, I'd just like to present this proclamation to this great leadership of the community. Javier Flores from Lulac, Mr. Jorge Núñez with Salva, and Felix with Salva, and your name? Maricela, also a Salva member. Thank you, council. Thank you, staff.
Thank you again for coming in, joining us. Thank you.
So you're gonna have to arm wrestle who takes it home, okay? Rock, paper, scissors? Thank you very much. Okay. So we got a bunch of people here. I was at a service, sir? Okay, yeah. So I've got, I've got several people that we're gonna ask to come up here, but I'm gonna just give a real quick, you know, you always know who's important in the community based on how full that parking lot is at the church. And you know what? I'm glad I got there early. When I was out there at the church, Livingstone Church, that place was packed, and there were only a couple of empty seats on the outer edges, and the only reason that happens is because everybody else is crammed in in the front. And Herb Pops Wire was a very, very influential individual in our community. There's a lot of kids today that probably would've gone down the wrong path, and we heard, we heard some great stories about his pickup truck, the Blue Goose, and waking the kids up in the middle of the night to go feed the pigs, and make them get out there and run. And, and I remember one thing that one of the gentlemen said that stuck in my mind was, he would just tell the kids, "Just run. Don't stop. Just run. And keep it up. Do your job, do it well, and see it, see it to the end." That was amazing, just listening to people in the community. None of the people were professional speakers, except perhaps a bishop, but the, but the community really said it well. So I would also like to ask, I'd like to ask the family to come up, and I've got, I also have Samantha Herador from the Congresswoman's Office. I've got Donna Hill here as well, and Chuck Boswick from the supervisor's office. We'd like to present the family with a proclamation in memory of Herb Wire. Mike, I know you were one of his students, right? I know I missed something. Come on up here and help me out, man, because I know I'm missing something. I tell you, the service started at ten o'clock. We got out of there, it was almost four o'clock when we got out of there, because there were so many people that had so many good things to say. Mike, give us the Reader's Digest version on Pops, okay?
So Coach Wire was my coach and track Palmdale High School from nineteen eighty-three to nineteen eighty-five, eighty-six. And thinking about tonight, I thought I might say some words. But my first race, I ran eight hundred meters and came in last place. Apple Valley High School. And he looked at me, and he, he gave a smile that he did, and he said, "Don't worry about it. We're gonna keep training. You're gonna get better." So, three years, senior year, lots of training, lots of belief, lots of hard work. We ended up having a pretty good year. And the one thing that I remember that I really appreciated him for was, the Gold League Finals for the four forty relay came up, and he made it fair. You had to race to be on that team. And we raced, and I raced against a lot of really good athletes, and I got lucky that day. But he made it the anchor of the four forty relay. And to me, that, that meant a lot to me. It hit my heart. And we won the Gold League championship, won the gold medal, and I got to take it through the finish line as the anchor, and I'll never forget that. But a couple of words that stood out to me about Coach Wire. He was humble, he was kind, he was light spirited, he wasn't heavy-handed, and he was a performance-based coach. If you perform, you get to be on the field. And that always meant a lot to me, and I think that's an example that we should all aspire to follow. My senior year, a lot of people don't know this, but I had a difficult time at home in my spring semester, and he was like a father to me in a lot of ways. And my escape from home was going to school, running track, and being around Coach Wire. So he'll never be forgotten, always be cherished, and I appreciate him, and I appreciate you all being here.
And that's basically what we kept hearing all afternoon, where all these kids that are grown men, and, and many of them whose kids, their kids pops and coached too, and about how, you know, they, all the stories about the snake in the woods, and, I mean, I never laughed so hard at a memorial in my life hearing all those stories, man. And he's, it was, it was really a cut-up, but it was very touching. So, we've got a number of people here. This is, are you gonna come up, or are we gonna have one of the, we gonna have the whole family with it? This is, this is your moment here. How do you wanna do this? You wanna bring everybody up here? Who do you got?
My oldest daughter, Dolores Woods. And our youngest daughter, D. Wire. Youngest son, Marcus Wire. And our oldest son, Maurice Wire.
Great. Want you to come on up? Ann? Who's the, who's the group spokesman?
Mike.
Sound along, Mike. And who's, who's, who's gonna be your spokesperson here? You wanna do that? Maurice. Right. Okay, met you the other day. Good.
Well, first of all, I just wanna thank, thank God, one, for my father, who was a man amongst men, coach amongst coaches, a friend among friends. He was a husband of fifty-eight years, father to me of fifty-five years, and my oldest sister fifty-six years, and then we go on down from there. My brother fifty-four years, and my youngest sister forty-four years. Grandfather, that was one of my father's desires, was that he never got a chance to meet his grandparents, because they, he was the youngest of eleven, and so he never got that chance. But he always wanted to be the best grandfather that he could be. But not only that, God blessed him to also be a great grandfather. And so, his love-
That's the best job, being a grandpa.
His, 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 his love for the youth of the community, his thought was, if he could reach them, and they would grow, then that would build the community. My father made a lot of sacrifices. You mentioned the Blue Goose. The Blue Goose was loaded down, front and back, and as one of, one of the young men stated on Saturday, "It's probably illegal." Well, it would be illegal here at this time, but it wasn't illegal then, to load up all the boys in the back of the truck and ride to Palmdale to participate in sports, and to give them rides home. Not only that, my father, after he, after coaching for a while, he noticed that there was some youth, the families were not able to send their children off to track meets with, and football games with, with money in their pocket. And after Prop thirteen hit, our ASB money got cut out. So nevertheless, he began barbecuing ribs on Fridays to take to invitational track meets, so that everyone would have something to eat. And that came out of his pocket. His in my mother's pocket, I'll say it like that. Because you know the statement behind every, "Good man is a great woman, amen?" And so, my dad was just one who cared. He saw the big picture, and he acted. And so I just thank the city of Palmdale for recognizing his contributions. I thank all the different offices that are being represented for recognizing his contributions. And I'll pass that over to-
To Dolores.
Look, Glenn, I'm Dolores Woods. I just wanna say that my father loved not only his family, but his children. His, when I say children- His, when I say children, his athletes, okay? My father instilled a lot in me. And he coached the high school. He coached Palmdale U Football. Currently, until his death, he was a coach for Little Rock U Football, which I am the president of. And you know, we canceled practice today. And I see a lot of my little youth Lobos in this audience.
Who's here from the team?
Lobos, where you at?
Alright guys, good job.
You know, and you know, he also coached the youth track, Anto Valley Youth Track. And when my father was sick, they, a lot of little athletes went to the Junior Olympics. He had me set up the computer and we watched it live, the whole track meet on TV. You know, on the computer. But you know, I want to say thank you to you guys for recognizing my father. He was a great man, and I truly love him, and I'm sure everyone else did, thank you.
So I think it's important for everybody to understand why we do this. But everybody in the community has a part and has a role. Sometimes people step up and beyond that, and that's what Pops did. He was in the Army. He did all this coaching with the different youth leagues. He was, he started the athletic program over at St. Mary's. And again, that's, you know, for four hours the other day, we heard testimonial after testimonial from family members and kids, grown men, they were telling us that they got on the right track because he cared. So I want to give this to the family. You have to get your own frame, we didn't get your frame. But we really want to thank you for him because the community is so much better. And there's a whole lot of kids and a whole lot of families out there that are doing a lot better because he cared and because all you stood behind him. So from the city of Palmdale, I do this commendation in memory of Herbert Pops Wire. And I'll give that to you, man.
Hi, I'm Chuck, I'm Chuck Boswick. I work for Supervisor Catherine Barker. Today, she adjourned the Board of Supervisors meeting in Los Angeles in memory of Mr. Wire. She also told the folks there in the audience a little bit about his life. And I'll say that he touched my kids' lives too. They, I think three of them ran in relays at the Herb Wire Relay Meet that was held every year. So we want to present this.
Can you go? And I think we'll do the state and then federal, okay? Alright?
Hello, I'm Donna Hill, and I represent Senator Scott Wilk and today also Assemblyman Lackey. And I'd like to say I didn't know the gentleman, but listening to the stories, seeing the youth, it takes a whole lot of heart, spirit, and soul to touch youth and to do it well. So on behalf of the State of California, Senator Scott Wilk, Assemblyman Lackey, we want to say God bless, God bless you all, and heaven has a new angel.
And you'll see that the state got you a very nice frame for that one, man. Yeah, they did a good job, huh? There you go. And then from Congressman Katie Hill. Congresswoman, I'm sorry.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Samantha Heredor, and I'm here representing Congresswoman Katie Hill tonight. On behalf of Congresswoman Katie Hill, I would like to present to you this letter as an expression of our deepest condolences on your loss. And if I may, I will go ahead and read it. To the family of Herbert Wire, I would like to extend my deepest condolences to you as you remember Herbert Wire. As a coach at Palmdale and Little Rock High School, Coach Wire touched the lives of multiple generations of students in the Anto Valley. He will be dearly missed, and I trust his spirit will remain a strong force in your life as well as the hundreds of students and athletes he had the pleasure of mentoring over the course of his 47-year career. His dedication and service to the community and his determination to make a positive contribution are a source of inspiration to us all. He will not be forgotten. My thoughts and prayers are with you during this difficult time.
So John's gonna want to give a picture here, right? So do you want to give one of these to the family members here so that you're not just holding a big pile in your lap? Let's spread those out a little bit, and y'all can each grab. Okay, hold on, there you go. Alright, you hold the city one, you hold the city one there. Alright? And then we're gonna see if we can all kind of screw it in here. Does anyone want to get in the picture here?
Sure.
Somebody stand in front of Matt. And I want to thank you for him because there's a couple of generations that are better because of his contributions to the community. So ladies and gentlemen, let's give a standing ovation to the Wire family, please. What do I got? I lost my agenda. Who's coming up on this one? Michelle? Come on down. We have another commendation and in memoriam for Cecilia Tomeche. You know, this is a- Cece was a, I really liked her. She was a, she was integral with our Palmdale Sister City group for years. And maybe, can you help me with this? I'm not good at this stuff. Lisa, come on over here. This is Lisa, she's the president of Sister Cities. And again, this is what we talked about earlier, about the better we know each other's cultures, the better neighbors we can be. Maybe you can tell us a little bit here.
Palmdale Sister City is a sister city with Ponce de la Jalisco, Mexico. We're a part of, Dwight D. Eisenhower created this back in 1956. So the city of Palmdale joined together with the city of Ponce de la Jalisco, Mexico. So Ponce de la Square you see up front, that's named after our sister city. And this group has been together for the past 45 years. And we are very, very proud of that. We're part of the history of Palmdale, and we're very proud of that. I do want to mention that Cece is the one that got me involved. And somehow I ended up as being president because of her. She was always- She will, she will. She pushed, pushed, pushed. Cece was from Peru, Peru. And she came to this country like 25 years ago. And she always said that even though she went to go home to visit, she would come here. This was home. The United States of America was her home. And she raised her three children here. Her son Anthony passed away unfortunately six months ago. And we lost Cece like three weeks ago, was it? Yes. And unexpectedly. And she was such a strong force in our group, and she was such a beautiful friend to all of us. She, you know, if you met her, she would greet you with a hug, she would kiss you on the cheek and be so happy to meet you. She was a people person, and she loved everyone deeply. She was a force for our group, she was a fighter, she, you know, would say, "Come on, everybody, we can do this, we can do it." She was our cheerleader. She would speak for our group. And she was just such an amazing person, an amazing gift to us, her children, to her husband. We just loved her dearly. And we are truly, truly going to miss her. I know that she really loved you guys, and she loved the city of Palmdale. She's like, "This is home." And so she, you know, to her, this was everything. And I want to introduce you to her two children. This is Michelle Timochi and Peter Timochi. And they are two wonderful, wonderful young adults, and she raised them beautifully. And Michelle was our queen for our organization for a couple of years, and she did a tremendously wonderful job.
Except when she lost me in Ponce de la, okay? So, almost created an international crisis, but-
Yes, I was completely scared and wondering where the heck he was, so. But anyways, you know, we just want to remember who she was. She was just a beautiful light, a beautiful force, you know, a gift to all of us. Anybody that knew her, she touched their life in some way. She loved everyone deeply. And Michelle and Peter, thank you for sharing this with her, be your mom with us for our organization, because she really was super passionate about it.
While this is extremely hard, I just want to say thank you to the mayor and the city for just being there for us. And like Lisa said, this is our home. And we're just so appreciative of, you know, love and support we've received these past few days and weeks. And just this recognition means a lot to us.
Well, I'll tell you what, she's another one of those people that really helped improve the community. She brought people together. And again, being a driving force behind the Sister Cities, we have a number of Sister City folks, who want to wave your hands over here, all you guys there. So I'll see what Sister, there they are. It really helps make a difference in the community and really helped everybody understand each other. We do the exchanges each year. We bring folks up. She was a driving force behind getting the folks from Ponce de la to come up here. And they live in your home for a week with you. Then the following year, we would go down there and we'd spend a week down there. We live in their homes. And she was the one to help convince my wife that she needed to go and visit. I remember my wife went down there and she said, "But I don't speak Spanish." I said, "It's okay, they don't speak English." So it all worked out. So, but Cece was one of those people that, she always, she always came up with a solution. There was never a problem and she didn't have a way to solve it, you know? And I really, really respected her for that. She was really a driving force behind the organization. It's gonna continue here because of the groundwork that she helped lay. So on behalf of the city of Palmdale, the entire city council, I'd like to present this commendation to the family. Cecilia became a member of the Sister City in 2012. Became a Public Relations Officer in 2014. And over the years, Cecilia committed many hours of personal time and service. She's a devoted wife of Cesar for 27 years. Three children, Anthony, who passed away unfortunately, Michelle and Peter. Cecilia had the, she earned the respect, the admiration, the high regard of everyone that came into contact with her. So now therefore, I, Stephen Dehoff, our mayor of the city of Palmdale, on behalf of our entire city council, to express our deep appreciation for her service to the city of Palmdale, the Palmdale Sister City organization, and our community. And we extend to our family our sympathy on her passing. Thank you for sharing your mom with us all these years. Thanks again, sir. Thank you very much. Okay. Thanks, Lisa, thanks. I think we're there, is that it? Have to turn a page here.
Before we move on, Mayor?
That's it?
We should give special recognition to Helena Costa, who stood up and is leaving. But she was on the Palmdale School Board for many years. And-
Come on, come on up here. Why don't we get the rest of the Sister City folks up here real quick, just so you can see? And-
But Helena was on the School Board for several years here at Palmdale School District. And I think we should recognize and we appreciate you coming in here today, Helena.
Okay. My name is Sylvia Magallanes, and I serve on the Sister City Association as a secretary. And
I am Helena Costa, and I'm a member of the Sister City.
I'm Carol Little, Vice President of Sister City.
I'm Michelle Timochi, a member of Palmdale Sister City.
I'm Juan, also a member.
Lisa, and I'm president.
Thanks. So just to clear the record, we were coming back from a field trip. And Michelle was my escort. And we got back, and the bus was not, well, it wasn't pleasant, the bus ride. And I had to go back to my room after the long bus ride. I said, "I'm gonna run to my room." And then in the meantime, she ended up leaving. I told her where I was going, "Everybody's looking for me." And the phone calls started flying, they were calling everybody. They thought I got kidnapped or something. So anyway, so I'm never gonna let her forget that. So anyways, thank you, you guys. Thanks, everybody, for, this is a little long, I know, but sometimes it's important. Get to the red page here. So I need a waiver, a full reading of resolutions and ordinances, please?
So moved.
Motion, second all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. So we have public comments. So we got the consent calendar and non-agenda items. So if you have something to say, now's the time to come up. There's a couple of items that will be public hearing items here. But these are for non-consent items. Keep in mind that we can't act on non-agendized items. You can come up and speak on a consent calendar item. The council can choose whether or not they want to pull that item. So this is items number 7.1 through item number 7.24, or any non-agendized item. Anybody care to speak on any of that?
Yeah.
Come on down. And did you fill out a speaker slip, just so we can? Okay, great, come on in. So if you just come on right down here to the podium and state your name for the record, please, sir?
My name's Miguel.
Yes, sir. Okay?
And that was it.
I'm glad you brought that to our attention because we happen to have somebody here. Where is maintenance, where is Public Works? There he is. That's the guy right there. So you know what? Why don't you talk to him? And then he'll report back to us and let us know that that's had attention. Sometimes we just don't know it, we haven't been there. Took a look at it.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing it to our attention, sir.
Talk to him now or after?
Uh, go see him. He's right there, he'll tell you what to do. Anybody else? Man, come on up. Just state your name, or just a name.
Hi, my name is Nora Juanz, and I'm a student at Palmdale Learning Plaza. And I'd like to ask a question.
What's that?
So is it the city's responsibility to, for the safety of the students who go to my school?
Well, it's kind of shared with the school district, what's the problem?
So shouldn't there be an assistant for the- So, shouldn't there be an assistant for the traffic flow at our school, for the parents to drop the kids off and pick them up?
Okay, so, um, who's, who would be the referral person on this one? I'm looking for a hand. Somebody stick your hand up here, so, from, sir? Okay, so you see Assistant City Manager over there?
Yes.
Okay, he can help you with the specifics on that. The school district normally handles crossing guard issues. This, uh, we just got a, a report that's this thick, where we, uh, applied for grant funding and things like this to be able to fix intersections and put more improved crosswalks and things in. We're working on it, there's a lot of development going on right across the street from you there. That's all going to add to the improvement of that area. And I'll bet you, if you go back there and talk to Mr. Murphy back there, he's going to be able to tell you more than you ever wanted to know about what's going on.
Well, can I add one more thing?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, like, at our school, we have no drop-off area, no pickup, and it's really hard, because there's no parking either. And I think you guys brought the neighborhood services to our school, which took up our parking and gave us a violation. So, with, with, with...
It's a no-win deal.
Yeah, but with all due respect, so which is more important? The student's safety or giving us a violation?
Right, so, here's the problem. You know why those tickets come out? Because people called and complained that people were doing stupid stuff, that's why that happens. The other thing is, is that the schools, if there was any other occupancy that built, they'd be responsible for the driveways, and for the proper parking, and all that kind of stuff. The thing is, is schools can exempt themselves, and routinely do. So, the school created the environment that, that's occurring over there, and the city ends up trying to fix it, but I'm going to tell you something, there's only so many dollars in the budget there. So we can add it to the list of things, and being that you brought it in front of all these people, and millions of people on TV, I guarantee you that it'll probably be a little bit harder to look at that. But I can tell you, I know there's things that are happening over there. Again, if you go back and talk to JJ, he can talk to you a little bit more about it, okay? Thanks for bringing that up. So, okay, come on down, sir. And just go state your name.
My name is Bassam, my Bassam Juanz, I was, I was there at, what, the 21st, I believe, last month of 20, the 21st, I was dropping them off. The problem is, the school had a problem from there, it was built. And I know from, and everybody else here know exactly, when you build a school, it's supposed to have an accurate parking, drop-off, picking-up.
So...
We got a school that just seemed to me like it's just, was sitting on the 18, we were on the 14 freeway, and would just drop off on the side of that road.
We, I, we couldn't agree with you more.
Well, see, I, oh, you agree with me, I understand, but when I, nobody else agree, because everybody, everyone I have talked to so far, since that point first till now, everybody said, "Why don't you come early?" I said, "What if you all come early, and what's going to happen?" See, we all have the same answer. It seemed like they all went to this one class, they speak with one person, taught them the same language, and they're spreading it out. So I have an assault, I spoke to, what's the name of, uh, Public, no, Public Works, I spoke to Engineering, and I spoke to Safety upstairs, and I left a message for the city manager since the 21st, which I haven't heard anything from him till now. And I know, from where I've been in Palmdale for such a long time, city of Palmdale always take care of things. They don't leave it out of, just, out of the open air. Not only on top of that, even though we don't have all that space, we have city official comes in and taking spaces out of the parent's parking lot, and sit there and start taking writing ticket and taking picture of...
Let's see if we can find a better way to solve this, okay?
I'm sorry?
Well, let's see if we can find a better way. So, I would like you and your daughter, please, sit down and talk with JJ, he's the Assistant City Manager, and let's see if we can find a solution, or a better way.
Could we start with one thing, at least? Instead of coming out there and snapping a picture, writing ticket, they are called Neighborhood Assistant or Service or something like that? Why don't they come and help assist, or service, at least? Not come and give a violation, I don't know, dropping off your kid at school is so, seems like it's becoming a violation, actually.
I, so, we understand the problem. I've personally been out to a lot of the schools, and where the school staff comes out, and they help working with the traffic, but I think you've raised the issue here. I think that JJ is back there, he'll talk to you some more, and, and, and again, I know that there's some improvements coming to the intersection. Let's see if we can help find a solution to it over there. But they're kind of obligated, if somebody calls and complains, that, that, about parking violations, the parking guys end up...
Well, you can't have somebody calling right on the spot, and there's a violation. They sit there and been waiting for the parent to, to, to have whatever problem there is, which is parking...
Well, they move around to all the schools, they weren't just picking on you, they pick on everybody, trust me.
No, 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 they shouldn't be picking on anybody.
Right.
If there was a place to park or a drop-off, they should not be picking on anybody.
Right.
And not only that, there's a traffic that's going so fast enough. I have seen deputies stand there, all they do is just giving the parent ticket. How about the one that's speeding going through there, instead of a 25 miles an hour, they become 50 miles an hour?
Uh, there's a lieutenant that's right over there, he can address that for you. Okay, so if you talk, talk to those guys, because we can't solve it up here right now, we understand your problem.
City could solve.
Well, that's, let, let's let JJ see if he can find something for you, okay?
JJ is a part of the city.
Well, I'm a part of it, because I told the principal, if we're going to have a problem when I stop on the 14, put a flag on my kids' car.
I hear you. I got, we got, we got the same problem at my, my grandkid's school, so.
Well, let's solve this problem.
Okay.
And the city manager, James, never come.
Well, he's got, that's why he's got that guy back there, he's going to talk to you right now. Okay? Thank you very much. Yep?
I'm ready, let's go.
He's ready? Anybody else?
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to move on to the consent calendar. So I have a consent calendar, items number 7.1 through 7.24. Uh, city council, did you have any items that you wanted to pull? And Mr. Bishop, I know you had to accuse yourself on an item.
I, I want to pull 7.9 and 7.18.
7.9 and 7.18?
Correct.
And it's because you had, you done some work with those guys?
Uh, yes, on 7.9.
On 7.9?
Yeah.
And on 7.18?
I wanted to discuss that item.
Okay, so, anybody else? So I undertake a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of 7.9 and 7.18?
Motion to approve.
Okay, somebody push a button there, somebody push a second?
I pushed the motion button.
Okay, so somebody push a second.
Second.
Okay. Now, the motion and the second? City clerk, does it show? 1.8, yes. Okay? Carrie's 5.0, we'll do 7.1.8, and then, then we'll do 7.9, okay?
Okay.
Okay, so 7.1.8, Animal Control. Uh, Mr. Bishop, did you have something specific, or you just wanted to get a report?
Uh, I wanted to get a report, uh, from, from our staff to see if they had any more information. I know this has been an ongoing discussion, seeing how I've been pushing to see changes in our animal service contract. And, uh, I haven't, I haven't really seen anything defined, so I wanted to see what they had to say.
Carrie, or somebody want to come up and tell us what's going on?
Carrie can present the most current information. She was at, uh, meetings with the animal services folks on Monday and Wednesday last week, and where they're going over their efficiency program, uh, beginning to look at some audits, and looking at basically different ways of doing business. And then also, internally, we're looking at what kind of programs we can put together to create more of a hybrid system than what's operating under the county's contract right now.
And just, and, and also, this is a hot topic amongst many of the cities, the contract cities. Uh, it, uh, everybody's have, it, what's good about that is that we're all talking, and the staff is going back and taking that information in that direction. Um, so, they're not telling somebody one thing and telling somebody something else, because we're all talking and getting the same information, and then they're being made very clear that, uh, we're not happy with the process. And I know that, uh, I know a number of us have had a lot of calls from, um, some of the rescues, and the vets, and shelters, and things like that, in the community, and I agree with you, we need to get a better job done here, so.
Right, yeah, my, my main goal is to get this city on another track as far as we're getting some of those services away from the county, and taking them, uh, taking them over ourselves. You know, the LA County system is so far behind, it's cruel, costly, and unnecessary. It's, it's really become a sense of shame for our communities when so many other cities have made animal services, animal services a source of, uh, community pride.
Yep.
I feel like we owe it to our residents and the animals to provide a better service.
I think, I think we're trying, Carrie, you want to follow up on that?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, yes, since the introduction of the billing methodology by Animal Care and Control back in, uh, April of 2018, as you stated, several of the contract cities got together and formally opposed it, and raised concerns to the Board of Supervisors. Interim time, uh, since then, they have decided to suspend that billing methodology implementation. They have hired a consultant to look at the efficiencies, um, and the operations with LA County Department of Animal Care and Control, counting wide. Uh, we had a meeting, we being all of the contract cities with that consulting firm, uh, back in June, and two subsequent meetings, uh, both last week, um, in Los Angeles, to do some follow-up. Uh, there was, uh, the cities were in attendance, Animal Care and Control was not, as they felt that, uh, we were better able to, um, express our concerns and, and that type of thing, uh, without them being there. Uh, it was very apparent that they are seriously looking into, uh, the, the billing methodology as it was presented to us, and the efficiencies, uh, within Animal Care and Control. In the interim, we have been reaching out to, we've spoken to a consultant, uh, we have reached out to local rescues, and, uh, very established veterinarians in the area to see what the feasibility is of potentially, um, being able to use them as resources, rather than, um, and mostly for kennel services, uh, for the animals in the community. Uh, we, um, are very, you know, as a city, we're very passionate about our animals. It's very apparent by our cute critter and the number of animals that staff alone has, has adopted and cared for, and that type of thing. So, we have looked far and wide, um, I've made contact with several cities, uh, that are operating their own, um, animal shelters, to see what their costs are, and other ways that we could potentially, um, not just cut our costs, but better serve the animals in our community, and that is an ongoing issue. Um, there is some, uh, challenges between the term "no-kill", and, uh, some of the stigma that goes along with that. And as, uh, recently Supervisor Barger put out, the, um, socially, uh, conscious running of an animal care facility, and there are some significant differences, uh, with both of those. And so we're examining, um, all of the avenues that we have available to us.
Okay, I, I just want to make sure we continue to make, you know, progress on this. I share, I share Mr. Bishop's issues here. Best dogs have ever got have been rescue dogs, because they know that you rescue them, you know? Um, and, uh, and I got to hit, this is not reflection on the staff over there, uh, and the volunteers. They're, 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 they're busting their behinds over there to, to, but they're working within a bureaucracy, and that's what we're trying to get to the bottom of.
Right, or I believe our volunteers are doing a fantastic job, but they're, they're working in a system that, that restricts them, and, and, uh, you know, we opened this discussion over a year ago, and I was hoping to see a little bit more action than just, you know, we're going to continue forward.
It was April, it was April of, of 2018.
Yes.
When I brought this back to the council, and brought it first up, and you and I discussed it. And, and then it's been a matter of, uh, you know, one city can sit here and wag our finger at them, but now we've got dozens of cities, and we're finding solutions, and I expect we're going to be finding some.
It's a growing movement, and I think our city should be on the forefront, as, as we keep, you know, keep trekking along to the future. Another issue, when we had that workshop too, is just the cost breakdown, it's just very questionable. They weren't able to really tell us how many animals.
Oh yeah, you should have been at the first one when she came in, that, I mean, the, you could have heard a pin drop when she dropped some numbers on us then, so.
Yeah, it's, but the, you know, there's also other questions, like the large animal versus small animal. We get billed the same for a, for a rabbit or a small cat, as we do for a Great Dane. You know, the, the break for a small animal versus a large animal is 300 pounds. So there's a, there's a lot of issues there that need to be resolved with this audit.
And many of those concerns that you just raised were brought up, uh, with the initial meeting with the consultants, and have been examined even further, so those are all things that, um, that they're looking into, as, as far as the efficiencies.
So I guess, the only silver, I'd say the only silver lining in this for us is that, that year we have to figure this out, and then revisit this contract. And I'd really want to stress to staff that, I'd like to see some action taken, other than coming back a year from now with kind of another extension, so to speak.
And we are currently, um, examining a request for qualifications for a consultant to work with, uh, some of our, uh, rescues and nonprofits that are out there to see. Again, working with them, what the, the feasibility is of, um, maybe putting some of those animals in their care versus animal care.
Yeah, and I, I've got to reiterate what Carrie's saying here. I've probably talked to a dozen vets, rescues, and kennels. Everybody wants to help, but they don't want to be in charge of it. So that's going to be the key here, is how do we coordinate this, and what's the mechanism? Because we, you know, we've got, we're trying to pull the bureaucracy, that's a long entrenched bureaucracy over at the county, and we're, we've got to try to figure out a way of, how do we pull it out there? So we're not getting billed for, you know, it's ridiculous, you want to just bill us for 10 days. There's a man with dogs there for one day, three days, or 10 days. I mean, Holiday Inn can figure it out, but county can't, you know?
Yeah, and then we have questions about, you know, is, is, are we getting billed for county animals?
Yep, exactly.
That came from the county, you know, so there's a lot of issues there that, that need to be concerned, and, and...
I, I think, I think everybody on this dais is sharing your concern on this.
Okay.
And I think it's being made abundantly clear to staff and the city manager that we, we want to move forward with this. And I'm going to take that same message, I've got contract cities coming up, I think, a week or two, and I'm going to take that back as well. Maybe you can join me in, in expressing that as well.
I'd love to.
I'm wondering, uh, Mr. Partee, um, could we begin a, um, financial impact study, or, or an economic study on what it would cost for the city of Palmdale to go on its own here?
That's part of what staff is doing, because looking and coordinating with the rescues and so forth, uh, what our cost would be to kind of be that coordinator. And so, that's part of the overall look, is, one, to see how efficient the county can operate, and if they can improve their efficiencies. Is there a hybrid, where the county provides some of the services, and rescues, and coordinators, and so forth, provide the rest of the services? Uh, and then, is there an opportunity, uh, where the city takes on the whole range of, of animal services? And so, everything's on the table. I think, uh, our staff has spent a lot of time with the county, um, hearing them out in regard to how they're trying to change, uh, their program, and become more efficient, and provide us new numbers. Uh, and then, at the same time, we're looking at our alternatives.
Yeah, I think they came into it looking at like it was a, uh, profit center, and, uh, and where everything was a point of sale, with that. And it was made very clear to them that that wasn't the model that we were interested in.
Right.
And then, in all the cities, I mean, we had cities that, the only thing missing from that meeting was pitchforks and torches. I mean, it was a, very uncomfortable for their staff.
Yeah, they've, they've gotten a lot of heat over this.
Yep, and it's continuing.
So maybe, what could be done in the next year, if this, um, if this item passes, is to know what it would cost as an alternative?
I'd personally like to see a hybrid model. I think that would be a good first step into transitioning our shelter.
Yep, whatever the cost impact is, we should know what it is.
Let's, let's keep this, and, Mr. Partee, can we get, you know, some updates? As we move along here, uh, I think what we're hearing is, we don't want to wait till, you know, next year to get the update. So let's get, you know, maybe in the next couple of months, as, whereas each of these meetings come up, maybe we can just get one of your many memos.
There's more coming.
I know, but if we could just maybe get an update, you know, where we're at, and I'll be happy to report back, because I'm going to shake some trees when I'm down at the Contract Cities meeting, so.
And, and staff has provided the, the PowerPoint slides and executive summary of the meetings, uh, that occurred last week, uh, with the various cities, about 14, 15 cities in the county, and the county staff over a couple of days last week. And, so we can provide that to the council, uh, as an initial update, and then, as we go along with looking at the hybrid model, or looking at all the different alternatives, keep the council updated on that.
I think, uh, I think we also have the supervisors, uh, Field Deputy is here, and he's been taking notes furiously. He's already emailed her, told her that to hear.
It's not any consolation for what the issue is, but, uh, the county itself is recognizing this as being an, an issue. Uh, they actually discussed this particular issue at the Local Leaders Academy, that I'm attending, uh, this past Saturday. Uh, at the end of the sessions, the county makes a presentation. So far, it's been two sessions, and the last session, they actually talked about the county's priorities, which I believe are seven of them, uh, and they did talk about this particular issue that cities are having, not only us, the city of Palmdale.
Right.
So they recognize that, and that's something that they're not shy about, in trying to find a, a solution. I, I know it's not any consolation to, to your concern, and everybody's concerned, but I can tell you that the county is actively talking about this being a big issue.
Well, that's good to know, you know, getting the attention and rattling the cages is the first, the first step.
I can guarantee you that they're, this is not going unnoticed down there at the Board of Supervisors either, you know, so. All right, if there's nothing else on this item, then, um, so this, this would be for a one-year extension, and we have the ability to change or amend this at any point, correct?
It is a five-year, but we do have the option to be able to cancel at July 1st of any given year with proper notification.
Great, okay. Great, okay, anything else, or we get a motion on this?
Motion to approve, I think it's been moved.
Okay, you have a motion, we have a second?
Double second.
There's a motion, we have a second.
Okay.
Start voting.
Mr. Carrillo and Mr. Loa on that? The item is four, one, Mr. Bishop voting now. Okay, we'll go to item seven point nine then, to give Mr. Bishop the chance here to step up.
I'm gonna recuse myself, potential conflict for having done business with this organization.
Thank you, sir. All right, seven point nine, does anybody have any particular staff report that's necessary on this or a motion?
I'm going to approve.
Mr. Loa makes a motion to approve?
A second.
We have a second by Mr. Carrillo.
We have a motion, who, who did the motion?
Mr. Loa.
Okay.
And then, Mr. Carrillo did a second. And the screen will come up, motion in progress, and we can vote. Item's four zero with Mr. Bishop, standing. If somebody can turn the music off and take the headphones off, and come back in. Outstanding. Okay, so we have eight point one. This is for our Housing Authority Commissioners, Christina Fragasans and Thomas Bob Brown, they've been serving admirably in those positions on our Housing Authority, and in fact, of getting even more active, and the motion is to reappoint them, is there any, is there any public comment on this particular item? Seeing none, that's the nomination, anybody, anybody object?
Nope.
All right, so we'll call for the, call for the question? So, make that move, somebody want to push, you got a second, okay?
A second.
Somebody push.
Okay, I have a first and a second.
Okay.
Okay. I'm recording the motion, start voting.
Five zero, congratulations, we'll swear you guys in in a little bit. Eight point two, we have the Planning Commissioner, position opened up, District Two, Mr. Loa has nominated Mr. Dean Henderson, I concur with that strongly, Mr. Henderson is on the Citizens General Plan Advisory Committee, he has served, well-served, our Planning Commissioner in the past, is there any public comments on this item? Seeing none, council comments?
I think that's a good choice, I actually made presentations to Mr. Henderson as a staff member some years ago, so I, I believe that he's, he will do a great job, he grades, he brings a good points of discussion to items that are presented for approval, and I think it's a good fit to the Planning Commissioners, the fact that we have three commissioners here shows that it's support, I believe.
But we have a quorum here, we got a quorum.
We have, they're all here.
Don't speak among yourselves.
Yeah, and I, I think what's, aside from the fact that Dean has served on a Planning Commissioner before, he has always brought this, this ethic for, for aesthetics for the city, he wants to make this a more beautiful place to live in, it's already a beautiful place, but he wants to enhance that, and so, I think that Dean should be supported, and I think he will give great service to the Planning Commission and to the City of Palmdale.
I concur with that, he knows, he knows the valley really well, he's in real estate, he knows all the areas, he knows the zoning, and seems like a natural fit.
I like, what I like about Dean is, we share a common philosophy that we can tell you all day what we're doing good, how can we do it better, and Dean looks at it from that perspective, so I'll take Mr. Loa as a motion, and I will, if you push that, and I will be proud to second that. And we'll call for the question.
Okay, we have a person a second?
I'm sorry, did you have, you good, okay, I'm sorry.
So, we can vote?
Good, congratulations.
Welcome aboard, Dean.
Again.
So, I'm just gonna give a hint to the planning staff.
Hang on. Yeah, here he comes.
He's big in landscaping, so he always asks a question about landscaping.
Three, three letters, LMD, it's all about the LMDs.
Okay, so we have item number nine, public hearing.
Great, good evening, Mayor and members of the council, staff is requesting a public hearing to hear a public comment on the draft Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, known as the CAPER, for fiscal year twenty eighteen through twenty nineteen, a public hearing to obtain citizen input on the community needs for the twenty twenty through twenty twenty-four consolidated plan and the twenty twenty through twenty twenty-one action plan, as well as review and approve the twenty eighteen through twenty nineteen CAPER, and authorize the city manager or his designated to make necessary changes and submit the CAPER report to the U.S. Department of Urban Development, HUD, by September thirtieth, twenty nineteen, in compliance with all of HUD's regulations.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and open a public hearing, did anyone wish to speak on this particular item? Okay, I'm seeing none, move to close public hearing, please?
A move.
Second.
Motion second, without oppositions ordered, staff recommendation is to approve the recommendations and findings on the staff report, is there any discussion from the council?
It's a report that obviously had a lot of work put into it by staff, it's very extensive, very precise, and I think it should be approved.
Thank you.
I'll take that as a motion, sir?
So, so moved.
Ms. Ben Court will second it. Any other discussion?
Do you have a person a second, start voting?
Page five zero, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, item number ten, special report, this is something that everybody from twenty-fifth out to one hundred and tenth wants to hear about. Bringing your backup and your wingman and everybody else here?
Is there a bike, Mark Zuber left is the project manager.
Wingman.
This is a report on a Pear Blossom Highway rebuild project.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and members of City Council, item ten point one is, is the, excuse me, is a special report about the Pear Blossom Highway rebuild, and we're calling it that on purpose, you know, you call it a project, call it repaving, call it whatever, but this is actually a full rebuild of the existing section of the roadway, structurally, it will be completely re-taken out and then rebuilt into a brand-new section that will, will really hold the, the amount of truck traffic and everything that currently travels that roadway, the current average daily traffic on that roadway is about thirty-four thousand vehicles, and we estimate that about, I think it's about fifteen percent of those are trucks, and that's a very high, high number. You know, over the years, this road has had a lot of temporary fixes, and, you know, just, that's one of the things you just can't continue to do forever, so, I'd say about five years ago, we applied for a Tiger grant for about seven million dollars, that did not go through, we did get a grant for about two hundred thousand that paid for redesign of the project, and that started this process that we're here for right now. So, we're really doing something about this, the, the county actually owns, and you'll see the county seal there next to ours, the county has about twenty-five percent ownership of this project, and so they are putting in funding of about that amount. The, so, so far, our, we've, we've actually applied for a number of other, we've looked in other sources, we've looked at Goods Movement Funding through Metro, we've done some other things, and we've really tried significant amount of time Mike Bean and other staff members have gone down and tried to get other, other funding for this, but at the end of the day, and I'll go through the funding a little bit, those efforts were not successful, so, so this truly is just a city and a county project with a little bit of federal design funds. The design process was lengthy, we, we went through a number of, of, I guess, changes, tried to prove the drainage, we weren't able to go outside of the existing roadway footprint, but we changed the drainage, made sure that it was draining, so, other than that, we did a lot of value engineering with the, with the roadway structure, you know, you can put in a structure, you put in concrete there, but it's gonna cost too much, you can put in, you know, cheap pavement, go quicker, and you're gonna end up taking a lot more time in, in the, in the price, you're gonna have a higher price, so we've done some balancing of the section versus the time versus the, time of construction versus the price, and we've done a considerable amount of outreach on the detour planning, we've got a number of detours that are gonna have to be done with this, and tonight is really just to bring this, bring more light to this, to explain what we've done, and then also get this word out to the public, and I'll go through a little bit in a minute, what the, all the efforts that we have done so far, as, as far as public outreach, could you go to the map? There we go, so, the project is, is really from the California Aqueduct, Phase One goes all the way over to about Thirty-third Street East, and then really where, about where the Barrel Springs Elementary School, then Segment Two is from there over to about Forty-Fifth, roughly, and then the last section is from, from there over to Fifty-Fifth Street, just shy of the one thirty-eight, the south side of that Section Three is where the county owns, or, or has, has jurisdiction over that right away, city has the north side. So, as I said, and we've done a lot of outreach on this, you can see at the bottom, the city has, city staff is working with a consultant that we hired for the construction management, inside of that firm, they have a public outreach, or a public relations firm, that is gonna be managing all of this, all the, any input, they're gonna manage the website, they'll be taking the calls, there's the, the eight-five-five-two-eleven-twenty-two-hundred, that's the number that people will be able to call and ask questions or lodge complaints, or, or they can text two-two-eight-two-eight as well, and then Instagram, Facebook, and Twitter, we'll be on all of those social media events, and John Milner will help us coordinate with the consultant, but the consultant's really gonna be doing the, doing the heavy lifting, and the reason we did that, we wanted to make sure that we were getting the message out to the public, and, you know, this is gonna be a painful process, because we've got a number of full closures, I mean, when you're closing down a road for potentially, you know, two months, or even up to ninety calendar days, there are gonna be detours, detours will go down Avenue S, they'll go down Avenue R, and we're gonna try to convince people to use mostly the Palmdale Boulevard, because it's Caltrans road, but, you know, where there's only so much we can do when you've got other roads that are truck routes, like Avenue S.
Can I interrupt you for one?
Of course, yes.
One question? So, see, is there gonna be utilized in Caltrans forty-seven, Palmdale Boulevard, is Caltrans facilitating any of the rerouting or any information to drivers before they get to Pear Blossom?
On the, in Little Rock, say, yes, we'll have message boards, I think there are message boards down there, yeah.
Okay.
And then we're working with Caltrans on the fourteen with their, their stationary message boards, and then we'll have message boards on Pear Blossom Highway coming northbound or north and then east.
What about on the traffic lights, are they gonna be synchronized to do a better flow of traffic on Palmdale Boulevard?
You know, we've, we've tried that, just on a regular basis, trying to get them more synchronized, and we've, I, I, we've tried over the years, and we've been unsuccessful with trying to get them to do a better job at synchronizing, it's just, you know, we're trying to coordinate with them as much as we can, we'll bring that to them again, and maybe this time, you know, especially after they see the additional traffic, maybe we can get something done on that.
So, so while we're directing them as a detour to go down Palmdale Boulevard, we can't stop them from going down S, correct?
Not that we know of yet.
Because like I said, is, we've just repaved, we've just repaved Avenue S, and those trucks coming through there are gonna rip that up.
Wait, I looked at the list, I saw, because hey, S on our map is not doesn't need the truck route, so if you've got the information.
It doesn't stop them now?
So, if, if it's.
If they're there every day, all day long?
Yeah, if it's not a truck route, then they can't really go down there on a regular basis. Yeah, so those are things where, yeah, absolutely.
I, I follow them, I live on S, and I follow them every morning from Twenty-Fifth Street all the way down to the freeway.
Okay.
So, I mean, they're.
And they're regular.
They're just openly driving down.
Are these the quarry trucks?
Huh? These are, these are the big diesel trucks.
Everything.
Yeah.
Just like every, everything.
I just, you know, you guys, we spend a lot of money redoing S, but I just don't wanna see it get ripped up, there's not a whole lot we can do, because it really is.
I'm getting a lot of complaints already.
It, it's gonna take them out of the way to go, in their minds, to go down Palmdale Boulevard, whereas they can just, you know, shoot down S instead of our, so I don't, are we gonna have additional enforcement, are we gonna pay some overtime for the sheriffs to take them out there with additional traffic enforcement to keep those trucks off there?
If that's a problem, then we'll have to talk about enforcement, yeah, we are coordinating very closely with the Sheriff's Department and, and fire and, and the schools, I mean, that's something we can go over.
And my fear for Palmdale Boulevard is the roundabout, I, I hate seeing a bunch of trucks going through there every day, all day long, they have a habit of, you know.
Roundabouts and eighteen-wheelies don't really go together.
Yeah, I think that's a bad wind, but what are we supposed to do, right?
Yeah, I saw that on the news, yeah, there aren't, there aren't a lot of really good alternatives to Pear Blossom Highway.
And, and I have to say, I'm a little, a little disappointed in the county only paying twenty-five percent, I know they only owe twenty, own twenty-five percent of the road, but that road is a connector for their residents from, from east county area all, all the way over to Acton, so it's their residents that are also using that road, so I wish the county would have participated more in paying for that, the changes on that road.
I would agree with you, Laura, that, that road is highly traveled by a lot of people that aren't in this area, that are trying to get to Vegas or trying to get through our city, that is, that has become the expressway through Palmdale, I feel like, and, one of my main concerns with this repavement is that people that go to work in the morning aren't affected, they're not late, that, that the crew that works on this road knows how to time this right, you know, they're working on one side of the road in the morning, where the opposite, where people are going to work, and then they switch, if something like that's possible, where they're, they're doing this thing, so it's, it's impacting people as little as possible.
One of the things Chuck and I had talked about was, the, and that they're looking at, is restricting the hours for the trucks during, during the commute times, we, we can do that, and I think that we need to seriously take a look at that, because if the, the trucks turn around and they reroute onto the actual state road, because this is intrastate and interstate traffic, Caltrans really should be helping us more with this job, and they're not, so you know what? Send the trucks, you know, between four AM and eight AM to Palmdale Boulevard, the businesses aren't open as a rule, most of them aren't, aren't open until, till nine or ten along the Boulevard, and, and relieve that traffic off of Pear Blossom, so that the commuters that are coming from the far east side have the ability to get in and, and, and not have the, that truck traffic, and then maybe open it up after that.
Right.
And then do the same thing in the, in the evening crunch, and it'll just make it a mess, but Caltrans at some point, those, these state guys, District Seven's gonna have to figure it out, that they've got some responsibility here, they're not upgrading and taking care of Palmdale Boulevard, Boulevard like they should to begin with, you know, and then, you know what, if we have to restrict the traffic, we're gonna restrict the traffic, and they'll have to figure it out, but, you know, I think that message needs to go over to Caltrans, they need to start thinking about this, thinking about it right now.
I think those are all great ideas, and, and Mark's taking notes, and I'm sure that we will, we'll, we'll try to incorporate those into our detour planning, and, and about talking to Caltrans, I think, you know, to, or the county to contribute a little more, I think is a great idea, so far they've said that this is, you know, that's where they are, you know, and that's, they, they believe they have a legal ability to do that, so I don't know if that's.
You know, let's not forget that I've heard complaints about the condition of the road.
Yeah.
I use it, you know, all the time too, but this is gonna inconvenience us motorists driving because of the necessary repairs, but at the end of the project, it's gonna be a great highway to ride on.
Right.
It's gonna improve travel time, so, and I experienced that around one, two years.
It's gonna be a headache for a while.
Yeah.
It will be, it will be, but it's for, for our grand pleasure, if you can, if you say it that way.
I, I agree with you.
It'll be great marketing stuff.
We need to make sure that, that as they, as they complete this work, that, that people are affected as little or done as possible, we've got thousands of people that need to get to LA by six, seven, eight in the morning, and they can't be late to work.
But I also want to caution with Palmdale Boulevard that there are several schools right off of Palmdale Boulevard, they have the TPAA, the Airspace Academy is right there, you got people, you know, walking across the street, across Palmdale Boulevard to get to Palmdale High School, so if we could just make sure we're not routing those track, those trucks through Palmdale Boulevard when those schools are loading up with those kids, that's just a recipe for disaster.
Lot to think about.
Has to be done strategically.
Port nation needs to be done, for sure.
All right, Chuck.
So, the, Mark, if you could go to the, the, the fact sheet, you know, this, this is the fact sheet, I mean, and I think you have a copy of this, talk. I mean, and I think you have a copy of this, talks, talks a lot about, uh, the details of the projects, the, the three segments. And then the cost and the funding, our, our work hours. We do have, uh, as I mentioned before, I think the most painful part is gonna be, uh, when we have a complete shutdown. And people are just gonna have to find a way, uh, Avenue S isn't.
Bridge area.
Yeah, Avenue S isn't gonna be a great, uh, alternative mainly because there, it's limited in the morning. You're limited as your, as a left turn under the bridge onto the southbound fourteen. It's a very short turn pocket.
You only have one lane.
You've only got one lane, so.
That's a horrible strike.
So that's gonna back up and people will find other ways. So hopefully that will deter people from, uh, to a certain extent, if they're coming down. Or they can go up Sierra Highway to, to, uh, to Pear Blossom from there. So there are a number of ways that, that, that they can do it. But this is, uh, so this is fact sheet, uh, we split it into two, I, I don't need to go through all of this. It's, it's pretty self-explanatory, the, uh, the Antelope Valley Press has just been great to us. We've had so many, uh, articles, we started back in, uh, if you go to the next one, Mark. Yeah, there we go. Started in February with articles, you know, about this. We've, we've been in Palmdale Magazine, we, we've had city flyers that went home to the, to the kids via Peach Jar. And, uh, we're, this is the main thing we're trying to stress tonight, although we've got some great ideas from y'all. This is, uh, this is really tell everybody what's going on, get the information out there. Provide sort of resource places where they can go and get additional information actively on a daily basis is, is how often they're gonna be changing the, the website. And there'll be a link from our website to the project website too, so that, uh, people will be able to go there. And then our construction start, uh, uh, mention the second from the bottom, there's September fifth. We're gonna have a community meeting at the Barrel Springs Elementary School. They've already been informed, but this is just something for parents and other people that are interested. And then, uh, September sixteenth is the construction start and that's, and we'll be able to get this moving.
So Mr. Affleck, um, I think, you know, I drain all the other concerns that have been mentioned. But one, one area is that, uh, as has been stated, uh, Pear Blossom Highway is a, is a way that a lot of people that are coming up from the valley, the west side and so on go. And, and there's people that have become accustomed to going through there, you know, on their route to, uh, Las Vegas and Victorville and so on. But they're gonna, they're gonna end up in a real stoppage at twenty-fifth East, right? They won't be able to make a left-hand turn there to go down to S from there.
We're gonna be able to, I think, do we have the, the, those signs?
Well, we'll have a message boards, yeah, we'll have message boards at the freeway. And then before they get to, right when they get to the Sierra Highway exit or, or the left turn that would be Sierra Highway. There will be message boards there saying that, that it's closed a mile ahead or exactly what the message will be, uh, something like that.
Something.
And, and if they're zoned out and they, and they miss it, they, they can go straight forward because there are some other, you know, there are people that live down there. There's one business, I think, there's a Realty office right on the corner. So, yeah, there's, there's gonna be notices, but there, there are.
Always gonna be someone.
Fail state for, for some people, yeah.
But once they get to twenty-fifth East, uh, they, they have to make a U-turn and go back, I guess.
Right.
Yeah, and they'll be able to do that.
Yeah. And I'll mention too that the, the, uh, on the curve, as you, as you curve from pretty much northeastbound to trade eastbound. There's that curve and then we've had some accidents happen where people cross over the center line. So we're putting a barricade down the center of the roadway through there that would prevent that. In addition to a barricade in front of the, uh, school, front, well, the, the, um, yeah, Barrel Springs Elementary.
Barrel Springs, right.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, uh, and then as far as funding, the funding is the thirteen point five million dollars. And it, we have this small, uh, federal grant, gas, gas tax, um, Measure M. And I'll, I'll just stress that the Measure M, the Measure R and the SB one funds are all local return. So, yeah, it's just, uh.
It's not extra money?
It's, no, and it's, it'll affect, uh, we think that our, our paving program internal or, or within the city, our normal is about nine million roughly, seven to nine million. And we think that maybe next year, because we're putting a lot of funds into this, that we might be in the five point three to, uh, to six range. So it's definitely affecting our long-range planning for the near term for next year.
And there's an additional right-of-way acquisition, um, for the project, right? It's already on existence. So thirty-four thousand vehicles, that's a current count, uh, you mentioned earlier today?
Thirty-four thousand ADT, yeah, average daily traffic.
So again, I'll, I'll, again, point out the traffic volume that is on that side of town. And I think that's a great EIFD, uh, area to work on just because of the mayor, uh, number, thirty-four thousand vehicles. I think that anybody that works in economic development, any developer that looks at thirty-four thousand vehicles, uh, would make it a great EIFD project, uh, in that side of town. So just wanted to reiterate that number, it's very, uh, high.
It's good, yeah.
And something else I think we should throw in the pot there to look at, yeah.
Palmdale Boulevard obviously is gonna be impacted and, uh, what we have at Sierra Highway, when the train comes by there, is you have a backup. All the way from, uh, Sixth Street East back to the, uh, working freeway. So imagine what that's gonna be like once, uh, once you have the shutdown upon Pear Blossom Highway, so.
Yes, sir.
I don't know what we're gonna do though.
You know, maybe one way to alleviate a little bit traffic on Palmdale Boulevard is if we were to put a, a, a digital sign on the roundabout. For north, uh, bound on the fourteen to continue on fifty to Avenue M. Cause some drivers that don't know the area may wanna come and follow the reroute along Palmdale Boulevard, Avenue S. But if you put a sign saying that any northbound, uh, uh, traffic on the fourteen, they could continue on north out of the, uh, roundabout to Avenue M. That will get them to the fourteen freeway, they're going north. Uh, again, there's a lot of, uh, you know, drivers that come around this area for the first time. And if you just put the reroute on Avenue S of Palmdale Boulevard, they will just take Palmdale Boulevard to get to the fourteen going north.
You're saying Forty-seventh Street northbound?
Yeah.
Detour to Fiftieth and then over on M, yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Okay, what else you got?
That's it?
That's it?
Any questions?
Nope, I think it's gonna be interesting.
Nice work, Doug.
Okay, seat belts.
Yep, hang on. All right, um, so I think we're moving over to the Housing Authority. Thank you very much, uh, Public Works. Also, just for the, uh, for the Housing, for the Housing Authority members, I did ask the staff to prepare us a list of, uh, uh, Housing Authority properties. So we can kinda get a picture, cause people will call us sometimes, so that, that should be forthcoming soon. So now we'll know which properties we actually have some jurisdiction on, okay? I don't, I think I did something wrong here, Mr. IT.
Oh, right now.
Thank you.
I think I screwed something up. Was that, was it there?
I think I got it.
I was one button away. All right, so, uh, we're now at item, um, twelve on the council meeting, return to the council meeting. And we have the informational report from, uh, the council members, uh, so we'll start with, um, uh, AQMD. Mr. Bishop, did you wanna report on that one, sir?
Yeah. Yes, I do. All right, so, uh, for ABA QMD, we approved, uh, sixty thousand dollars in funding for a vehicle retirement program. For older vehicles to get off the road. I think it's very similar to the capture clunkers, we're basically just trying to get, uh, incentivized our residents to get the old vehicles off the road. That are creating a lot of pollution in the air. And another thing, uh, we, uh, did is we approved something, uh, for city Lancaster residents to get also rebate on, uh, used electric vehicles. So it's a rebate for that, it's a pilot program that, that they're initiating and, uh, we're gonna see how that does. It was the only.
I think we had a, uh, charging system too for the school, didn't we? We approved a charging system for the school.
I'll double check if that was on there or not.
I think we, I think we approved, uh, just in case, but, uh, the, the point that he's stressing here is, there's funding out there. That the AQMD has the ability to follow through if you've got a legitimate, uh, project that will help clear the air, get old vehicles off, get some electric vehicles.
CNGs, electric vehicles, just any, you know, anything alternative than traditional fuel.
And there's also, um, uh, some options for, uh, um, for not just cars, but equipment as well. So, you know, all that's, and, and chargers. If you have a business with a certain amount of, uh, um, clientele that come in, um, it's like some of the hotels, we've got some chargers in, we just did the one out at the school. So, um, and many of these come with, because of the fact that it's a grant, they have to provide it free of charge for a period of time. So keep that in mind, so that when you go over and you're in the vicinity of like the Honda dealership, you've got a DC Rapid chargers, you can plug in in twenty minutes, it's like a tank of gas. So these are all, these are great options out there and it's there to, to help clear the air for our kids, so.
So since the, um, we have a lot of government buildings here like the Sheriff's Department, maybe you guys can consider putting one in both the Lancaster and Palmdale public parking areas. So that people that come to the Sheriff's Department with their electric vehicles can charge while they're there.
I think that's great, we're gonna see more of these hybrid vehicles, I think, uh, plug-in hybrid vehicles. I think before we see full electric vehicles, I think that's the next step.
Right.
Just basically.
But I think as a government, we, we promote this and then we have government buildings that don't have anything to facilitate it, so I think.
I don't think they've asked, but I think it's a great idea.
I, I think that we should really kinda reach out to all of our government people and, and, uh.
Maybe as well as government people back there.
And of course, if we can get it at no charge to the county, that'd be even better.
So since you were gonna ask, can you ask about public parks, are they also eligible? Is it based on a number of vehicles parked in?
It has to do with, with the use, but the thing is that the parks are not overnight. So that's one of the things that you try to do too, is have a facility where they, they can get to it twenty-four, seven because of the, the shift work and stuff we've got out here. So most of the places we, we have them are, are at, um, like at the parking lot, uh, at, uh, at the PTC, um, at the hotel, things like this.
There's a lot of people that spend overnight at the sheriff's station.
There you go. There you go. Courtesy of the county. I don't know that they're driving their own car. Maybe an issue, so. All right, um, on that note, so if you have something, bring it in. AVTA, um, Mr. Loa.
All right, I did attend the AVTA meeting and, um, there's a number of things that were reported on, uh, including bus stop improvements, uh, requests that were made. Uh, speaking of going electrical, um, the AVTA is, uh, the only organization, let me see if I can get this right.
The largest.
That has the largest electric fleet of, uh, bus transportation in the nation. And, um.
Somebody will pass us next week because of the way these things come in, but as of right now.
Yeah, as of, well, at least August twenty-seventh, when the meeting was held. And, uh, but I think we're working diligently to, um, to continue to improve that. And it's showing in the economy of, uh, fuel, because going over to electric is actually a lot less expensive than, um, fossil fuel. So that transition is being made and there were several reports as to the cost and so on of, uh, uh, fossil fuel as compared to, uh, electric. And it's a, it's a very positive note for the, the residents of Antelope Valley and particularly the ones that, uh, ride. The, there was a report on ridership, on cost, there's a lot of metrics that were reported on.
We're, we're studying this stuff, I mean, they, we've got, Richard's got this whole stack of graphs and stuff here. And, uh, we're constantly digging into them, we're making them, some of the stuff is not, uh, we, we don't, we wanna see it, how it, how it's impacting the, the rider, the commuter. One of the things that we worked on was the number one, which runs from one side of town to the, all the way to the mall and then up into our neighboring city. And that, how do we improve the ridership on that? We adjusted the timing on a little bit and the ridership is way up on it now.
It is.
It's, I mean, it's, sometimes you just gotta do that little tweak and, and things will work, so. My grandson loves riding on that sixty-four, he likes to sit right where the, the bus twists like that, so that, that's, that's, that's the big fun. I like looking at that thing twist.
And I think that the AVTA will be, uh, working to improve the fare box recovery, the system on, um, that you encounter when you have to go in and present your, your funds. To get to, um, where you're going. So it was, it was a good meeting, it was very, uh, eventful, but the main thing is that the AVTA is certainly participating in the transition from fossil fuels to electric.
And it's not going to notice at a lot of levels.
I, I think those numbers are really amazing that we're number one in, in the country. Can, can we have that posted on our city website for our residents to see?
By the time it's put up, they'll take it down.
Put that way, we'll take that later.
Did something on it and it's been in a number of the, uh, and I know we all subscribe to the, um, um, Transit News and Mass Transit News.
I'm sure all our residents do.
Yeah, yeah, it's all out there.
But I, I think that's a, a, a good point for our residents to be able to go to the website.
Maybe the paper might wanna know that.
The district's also been, um, very active in obtaining grants, uh, it's obtained, uh, I believe it's seventeen million. It's in the millions that have been approved and several others that are pending, so. Uh, they've been very, uh, uh, very effective in obtaining those and aggressively moving, um, uh, to obtaining the ones that are still pending. So that's it.
Great. Uh, let's see what's next, um, Contract Cities, um, we had the Legislative Committee, there's still a lot of bills floating around out there. So there's quite a bit of discussion going on, on that. As, uh, Mr. Bishop and I were talking about earlier, we have the ongoing dialogue with the, uh, uh, among the cities. As our staff is reporting back to us, uh, we're talking amongst ourselves about what did you hear, what did you hear? You know, kinda comparing notes, uh, so that dialogue and that interface is working out real well between the, uh, different organizations. So that's primarily, uh, on Contract Cities, um, uh, I missed the, uh, um, the shindig that the sheriff put on. Uh, I wasn't sure what was gonna be happening because of the incident in Lancaster. Uh, there's another one coming up in September that fires putting on, so, um, we'll go over there and we'll continue the dialogue on all these Connie items, Contract Cities. Audit Committee, no meeting, investment oversight, no meeting.
Can I ask about the Audit Committee? We're supposed to have one on the twelfth of this month, is that correct? Were we able to reschedule that, cause I can't go to that one? I think there was a lot of conflict with other people too.
Yeah, that, that became a problem as well. Can we re, re, put that back out on Doodle and figure out another date there? Okay.
It's gonna have to be done in Santa Fe Springs for training that day, so I'll never make it back in time.
Yeah.
The challenge is we're trying to have it set before the audit, uh, the auditors came back for the pre-dead.
That's, if we have to do it in the morning or something like that?
Or the day before, the night before, or something, just, yeah, any, any day.
Let's just have that dialogue, we'll work that out.
Yeah, thank you.
League, we were at, uh, Jim, did you wanna report on that?
So at the Desert Mountain Division meeting in, in Big Bear, um, we had presentations, uh, by the city of Big Bear on the Big Bear Lake Fishery. And the, their sustainability program is really interesting on what they're doing to, uh, continue Big Bear as a destination. Uh, under the Desert Mountain Division news, uh, I think the big news was that Jeff Muirhead, the city manager of Big Bear is, is retiring. Sometime between now and the end of the year, he wasn't, he was kinda cryptic on, on what his retirement date was. And then around the county or around the, the Desert Mountain Division, which covers about half the state of California. The, I think some of the big news was really how heavily impacted China Lake was and, and Ridge Crest. Much more significantly, I mean, the number is approaching five billion at China Lake, uh, which is, which is pretty huge. I don't know if you had anything else to add to?
No, uh, I think the important thing is, is that, um, Big Bear, um, when we go to these, these other communities and we see what they're doing. It gives us things to give him headaches over, uh, because we see what, what, what other communities are doing and things like, well, like the, like the hatcheries, the state's kinda getting out of that. But it's important to sustain their economy. So there's things that you can kinda take that model and apply it to other things. So that's what we look for, we look for, especially when we go there, we look at things that, that their chambers are doing. How their, how their chambers are integrating, uh, integrated in with their, with their government, with their economic development, with their Business Improvement District, with their, with their, um, visitors and conventions, with their museums and things like this. And, and that's all stuff that we can bring back and grab those best practices from these other cities, so, uh, that's really the advantage there. Uh, also, on, on the league, on that note, we also had yet another Legislative Committee meeting. I'm on a number of legislative, so that tends to, the, the information doesn't change much between them, so, but, uh, that was very good. Sanitation District, uh, Richard, did we have a sanitation district or was that canceled? I was trying to find it. It was dark, okay. NCTC, there was no meeting, Recycled Water Authority.
Did you have a chance to attend that?
I went, did we teach you go too? Yeah.
Trying to remember, cause you go to so many meetings.
Yeah, it's like, a lot. Can I get out my notes? Um, we talked with the Recycled Water Authority about expanding. Um, we talked with the Recycled Water Authority about expanding, um, and getting the, the five stakeholders all involved, um, with the expansion. They talked about the need to get, um, a reallocation agreement signed, and I guess our, our environmental documents need to be revised every five years. So, the Palmdale, uh, Recycled Water Authority is working on getting that, that five-year revision done.
Right, I believe part of that environmental document was, it was, we were updating, we were updating it, it was costing us like, I think, thirty thousand and change.
Right, but in order to continue to get grant money, it has to be current, so.
And I think that, that grant was guaranteed, I think it was like half a million or something like that.
I, I have it written down, one point, I have a one point two million in grant funds, um, and maybe two point five if it goes really well.
There you go.
So, it's a little part that we get that study done and keep it current.
Well, I've gotta really hand it to you, to the Recycled Water Authority, to our public work staff, uh, and the other agencies, all of our partner agencies, when you go by there and you take a look at their recharge facility as it's going up on Elizabeth Lake Road, that is really turning into, it's really amazing, you really start to see it now when you look at it. So, that's something that, uh, we do the ribbon cutting out there, that's gonna be, that's gonna be amazing.
That bridge looks really nice too.
Yeah, they get the bridge in now, it's nice starting to, oh, that's what, that's what this is all coming to do.
And we're still working on our, our branding logo for the, for the groups, so.
Alright.
Yeah.
Is that pretty much it, with the branding, the expanding boundaries, the pha- phase two financing?
Yeah, we talked about iBank.
Right.
Um, and the financing.
We're gonna up our credit score.
Yep, trying to get that developed.
Yeah, alright, that's pretty much that.
Southern California Association of Governments, so, uh, that's SCAG, I was up to, uh, to that meeting. Um, the, the big thing is the re, uh, uh, Regional Housing Needs Assessment. Uh, the previous numbers were a little over four hundred thousand for the entire state. Um, the, um, HCDs released the numbers, and it's, I think, one point three million that they bumped it up to.
Wow.
So, it's over triple. We worked really hard to get a reasonable number, we were at over thirteen thousand for Palmdale, over thirteen thousand for Lancaster. Um, I spent most of my adult life there for about four years, working on arena committees and redoing it, and we got those numbers down to about four thousand each, and they told us to expect some substantial increases. Um, and the state will also be auditing for production of those when, I, we don't build that.
What's the time limit that they give us for that?
Yeah, they, you know what, they've been very vague about it, so I think it's, you know, they're, they're, they're beating up Huntington Beach right now, and, uh, they're gonna go around and wag their fingers at everybody else. So, I think that, um, uh, you know, there's not, um, there's a, a legal, um, there's a legislative and a moral obligation to provide a diversity of housing out there. And I'm gonna tell you something that, this, this bugged me, is, I got all the grief that we took, when I went down through the list, and there were literally only, I think, four or five people that were actually live near that, uh, Sprouts Development Project over there. Out of twenty-two people that showed up, only four or five actually lived right there. And the, and, and some of the stuff where you're hearing about, um, the low-income housing and all this kinda stuff, but you wanna know something? Everybody was banging a drum and waving a flag over Division and R, and coming out there, and that was, that was the greatest thing. So, I mean, you, you can't, you can't have it both ways, folks.
But I thought it was funny that I got a, a resident that emailed me and said, "You're trying to turn us into the east side." Apparently, they didn't know I live on the east side. So, I took a little bit of offense to that, 'cause I have a wonderful neighborhood that I live in, so, there you go.
So, but, uh, just, just so you know, that, that these, that, that, there's a, there's a, there's a lot of new mandates coming. Uh, we're looking at legislatively, um, being mandated for either duplexes or fourplexes, I'm not sure if that's been signed yet, um, by right on single-family lots, um, so, um, and, um, the transit-oriented issues, uh, the governor made it very clear that, uh, SB fifty may have been put on the shelf, but he, that, that the core items within it are contained in all these other bills, so they're solely gonna pick away at it, so.
With thirteen thousand, um, being built, I mean, they've got to remember the infrastructure problems that we have as, as far as water and, and roads and that sort of thing. We, we live in California, we live in the desert, we don't have a lot of water, I don't know who's making these decisions, I don't know where they think we're gonna get the water.
You know, uh, we all asked that, and I said, as close as, as close as I am to you, uh, with, uh, Mr. Newsome, and said, where, where's, I put the houses there, I, there's a jobs-housing balance we've gotta deal with, we've got, um, schools.
Maybe he can put in a pipeline from Sacramento to give us some extra water.
So, it's, it's a major issue, and we just need to be aware of it, so. Uh, moving on, 'cause I've got a book, if anybody's interested, if you're having trouble sleeping, I've got the minutes from the last meeting, they're about that thick. And I'm not kidding, they're about that thick, so, um, what's the next one? Sister Cities Meeting, um, Becky, did, were you there? Okay, it was canceled because of Cease, right, okay. So, uh, uh, State Prison Advisory Committee.
It was dark.
It was dark, okay. Alright, Mr. Bishop, you wanna start with any other, uh, events and things like that?
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff going on, um.
Tell me.
Yeah, I, you would know, you're at everything.
Oh, man, yeah.
Alright, I, uh, attended, uh, some of the park watches, uh, we had the Anaverty Park Watch over in my neighborhood, uh, movie nights, AV Fair Parade, uh, ribbon cutting, uh, Trio Coffee over, uh, over the Albertsons, uh, Ten Street West Shopping Center, uh.
So, that's important, okay, slow down. Independent coffee shop, custom blends, in the Albertsons parking lot. This is not a corporate facility, and they're excellent, Mom and Pop, they struggled to get this thing open.
Yeah, it, it looks like a franchise, that's the most amazing part, it doesn't look like Mom and Pop, they did a really good job with that.
Looks great, they did a great job.
That entire shopping center, Albertsons and Ten Street, is, is really getting filled up with new businesses, we have the burger joint there, and we have the coffee shop, we've got the, the Poki Restaurant. These are all new businesses that have been remodeled the inside of the unit, so there's, it's a lot of new action going on in that area right now, which is great. Uh, we had ribbon cutting, we're, the few of us were at for Pure Hearts for us, they are financial mortgage assistance and planning, uh, for people who are planning to buy a home, saving to buy a home, um, that kinda stuff, that was, it was started by a gentleman, uh, who had struggles in two thousand seven in the economy, and it prompted him.
Foreclosure prevention.
Yeah, the for, yeah, foreclosure prevention, anything that helps you buy a home, stay in a home, and, and you can keep the quality of life. Um, but he was prompted to start that, that business, that organization, I should say, because he was a victim of the foreclosure in two thousand seven, two thousand eight, so, uh, he's been doing really well for the residents in our city. Um, I visited the Extreme Home Makeover, uh, site a couple times, and put in some hours there, and there's more stuff, I'll let you guys dig into the rest of it.
Let's see, let's switch it up, Lori, you wanna go?
Sure, why not? I was gone a lot, I was traveling across the country, driving my mother to Tennessee, so I didn't attend a lot of events, but here's what I did attend. On August eighteenth, um, we did the meet and read at Katie Hill's office in, uh, Alpha Avenue M, and got to see her, her new digs over there, that was very nice. Um, did the Palmdale Water, uh, meeting on the nineteenth. On the twentieth, um, I attended the thirty-year anniversary of the B-two first flight, um, that was very, very nice. I was actually there for first flight, when I worked at Northrup, I worked on ships one through four. Huh? What?
You didn't know what your age. Oh, you were very young.
I was there very young. So, it was, it was kinda nice to, to be there, I actually have the, the video of the first, first flight from when I was actually working there, and it was nice to go back after thirty years.
It's on VHS, right?
It, it is, it certainly is, um, so that, that was a nice event, it was a nice, nice turnout there. Um, I attended on August twentieth, the, um, Economic Development, Infrastructure and Sustainability Workshop that we had, and that was really, really informative, I enjoyed it, um, had a lot of good information about what's going on. And then, on the twenty-eighth, I actually did a webinar, uh, with the League of Cities, and it was about homeless, and it talked about strategies for addressing the homeless, and how, what kind of policies and policing we can actually do to improve the situation. I was amazed, there was so much information, um, that we can, as a city, look at, and opportunities for law enforcement to engage, and what they can do and what they can't do, I, I recommend this highly. Captain, if you haven't seen this webinar, I would love for you to see it, it's got some great ideas for law enforcement and, and how to be a, a good partner in this. I was, I was really, really impressed, I also printed up all the, the stuff from it. Um, it's called Strategies for Addressing Homeless Policies, Solutions and Enforce- Enforcement, and I, I do recommend that webinar to, to anybody who has the time to, uh, to do it.
It's some good stuff.
It wa- it was really good, um, a lot of things I didn't know. And then, on August twenty-eighth also, let's see, we did the meet and greet with Katie Hill, um, here at City Hall, it was her birthday, so we got her a cake. And, let's see, oh, and then, on the twenty-eighth, we did a Girl Scout tour for, um, a troop, and they came to City Hall, we gave them a tour, and then we did a mock council meeting. And so, each of the girls got to come up with a script, and one was the mayor, and then we had council persons, we had one be the city attorney, and one was the city clerk, and, uh.
They do better than us?
They, you know what, they did so much better than us, but they had a script. And, um, it, it was a great time, I, I hope the girls had as good a time as, as, uh, Cherry and I, um, had, doing it for them.
I got a nice email back from one of my moms.
Oh, good, it, it was a really nice time, and I think that's all I did this month when I came back, so.
You'll think of something?
Yeah.
Let's see, go ahead, wanna go, Richard?
Okay, um, let's see, I, uh, attended the Sheriff Booster's, uh, the Palmdale Sheriff Booster's Board Meeting. Um, I was in the, uh, Fair Parade as well, I, I rode in the AV Fair float, uh, with the directors from, from Antelope Valley Fair, and I'm looking forward to stronger relationships between, uh, the City of Palmdale and the AV Fair. Uh, I attend because I'm a member of the Hispanic, uh, Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors Meeting, and, uh, topic of discussion there was, uh, ongoing, um, conversation between our staff, uh, particularly our city manager with, uh, uh, with, uh, with that organization to see where we can improve opportunities for businesses in the City of Palmdale, how the, uh, chamber can assist the city. Um, some of the events that have been mentioned, I, I was not able to attend because of, because of the, I have to be in court. Um, I was briefed on the high-speed rail, I bring that up because, um, it's really significant, I think, that the Transportation Center specific plan is, is gonna be really important going forward. It's gonna revitalize that part of the city, and, uh, I just wanted to mention that particular meeting.
That's a, that was a good meeting.
Yeah.
Well-attended, very well-attended.
The AVTA, uh, and I, and I was talking also about the briefing here at City Hall. Um, I attended the Pure Hearts, uh, that was mentioned, uh, one of the significant things is that they do address the, uh, foreclosure problem, which continues to be, uh, an issue in Antelope Valley. Um, then we attended the, uh, General Plan Workshop, um, that was well-attended, we, they were at Highland High School, uh, the mayor made some remarks there. Um, I met with, uh, we all met with Katie Hill, and, uh, that was significant because, uh, we have a, uh, what is being kinda loosely termed as a redlining of Palmdale by, uh, financial institutions in funding that we need for the construction of infrastructure and development of housing. And while on the one hand, the state is demanding that we provide all this housing, on the other hand, we're hampered because of financing. And, uh, this was something that I think Congresswoman, uh, Hill wasn't aware of, and she pledged that she would, uh, work to see what could be done on the federal level. We also discussed with her the, uh, the coming airport, and again, I think she's going to be useful in, in helping us, uh, uh, get that accomplished, uh, bringing the airport here to, uh, to the City of Palmdale, and to the entire Antelope Valley. Um, so I thought that was a, I thought that was a good meeting, and the cake was good as well, um, and, uh.
You had a small piece though.
I had a small piece, 'cause it was my birthday the day before.
Yes.
But anyway, uh, you know, lots of stuff going on.
Sure.
For me, I attended the, uh, last two, uh, family movie nights over at, uh, Merrick Care, A Hundred and One Dalmatians, and Had a Turn Your Dragon, my kids really enjoyed both movies, even though they've seen it probably five, ten times already.
They're familiar with the park.
They really enjoyed, uh, at the park, uh, there was popcorn and all kinds of things that they wanted to have.
Right.
Uh, also the, uh, John Again Concert, the ABBA, um, tribute.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Really, really nice, um, well-attended also. Uh, the EIFD, uh, workshop, uh, we attended, um, let's see, what else? Uh, I attended the, uh, Million Dollar Duck Race, and I was chosen to be the duck plucker.
I've always told you, I knew that about you.
So, that was fun, I've attended the event a few years now.
I appreciate you standing in there, uh, everybody was hung up.
Yeah, a lot of things going on.
We had so many things going on.
Yeah, that did.
Everybody, everybody was at something at night, and I'm, I was texting everybody, trying to find out, I can't break away, and, and I appreciate you covering that for me, uh, and I was looking forward to being a duck plucker, but I know if anybody could pluck a duck.
So, yeah, it's interesting, I learned that it's not the first duck that makes it to the finish line that gets the prize. They put a tube, and the ducks that go in the middle of the river, those are the ducks that are selective, up to fourteen, I believe. So, uh, that was fun, uh, and someone came with a, with a term, and I better be careful with my accent, they, they call, they call me the Mother Duck Plucker, because I was the one, uh, getting, getting those, uh, those ducks. So, that was a lot of fun, uh, at the end of the night, when everybody left, uh, I recently became a, uh.
I heard you were part of custodial, custodial staff over there now.
Yes, that's what, after everybody left, uh, we ended up cleaning up all the things that, uh, the Kiwanis Club, uh, does for preparation of that event, a lot of fun, a lot of kids having fun, and a lot of work too, I, I mean, those Kiwani members, they really do a lot of work. Uh, they invited me to a breakfast, they meet every Thursday for breakfast, they asked me if I joined, I said, I can do this, I can do breakfast. But with that, a lot of, uh, responsibilities come, the, the, uh, duck race, uh, again, a lot of fun. Um, I think that's, that's it for me. Huh? I did go to the fair, uh, that was an adventure getting there on Saturday night, uh, just before you get to the exit on Avenue H, maybe quarter of a mile, big line, uh, for people to get in, we didn't make it in the front until like about nine fifteen, nine thirty. Um, but the kids didn't mind, they got their, uh, bracelets, and they started having fun on, on the rides, a lot of fun. Um, the General Plan, um, meeting, uh, over on the, on the east side, on, uh, the TPAA. I was not able to attend that, I wish I could have done that meeting, but as you know, I'm attending the, uh, Local Leadership Academy through, uh, USC and the Los Angeles County.
Tell, uh, Professor Zarudian?
I did see him, yeah, I, I, I mentioned your name.
Burling Hills, I think, those days.
He said hi by, by the way, um, great program, but that's the reason why I missed it, over the TPAA, the General Plan Workshop. Uh, there are two more sessions coming up that I have to attend.
I haven't wanted to vote it up for years, I just can't break away.
It's a lot of fun, believe me, uh, council members, uh, from all over the county.
Yeah.
Not only council members, but they also opened it up to water boards and school districts, which makes it really, really nice to be able to hear from, uh, the challenges that other cities are having, and gives us a chance to see how everybody's doing.
You get a, a C license plate frame after that, don't you?
Well, I have to complete it first, so two more sessions coming up, and I'll report as they, they do happen. And by the way, I just want to mention again that the, at the end of each session, uh, on Saturdays, the county has someone, uh, presenting about a particular topic.
Oh.
And again, uh, the animal control issue, uh, that all cities are having within the county, was brought up and briefly discussed, uh, but other council members, they were eager to, uh, participate, as you might well know. Right, um, that's it for me.
Thanks. So, I attended a bunch of the same items, uh, we did coffee at a cop, uh, those are always a lot of fun. Um, and it was over at, at Camacho, um, this time, at the Mississippi Dealer. The, um, Fair Parade, uh, it was a blast, uh, had, uh, Mr. Bishop, uh, thumb to ride with me on that thing, so. That's good, man, it's, it is good. Um, I was up there with him at the, uh, Anaverty, uh, Park Watch, uh, yeah, went out to the Phoenix Football, I'll tell you what, how many people actually know, we have a semi-pro football team here, and they play at some of the high school stadiums, these are some good games, I'll tell you what, they get out there, these guys are working their hearts out, so it's, uh, it's, it's always, uh, uh, it's good to see those, uh, uh, those young guys out there, uh, working hard, you know, to, to, uh, to bring some pride to the community.
Team's winning right now, too.
Yeah, they, they've been doing very well, too.
Do they have a website where people can go?
The Phoenix, uh, High Desert Phoenix Football, yeah.
So, people can go and watch them?
Yeah, it's only a couple bucks to get into the game, and all the, the basic, you know, hot dog type stuff and everything too, you know, the basic. Uh, but it's, it's just a really, it's really a blast, and, and what's nice too is kinda like when you go to the Jet Hots games, these guys aren't all full of themselves yet, so they'll get in there and they'll mix it up with the kids, and they'll throw the ball around, and they interact with the youngsters, and that's what's really good, so it's, it's, it's a, really good for the kids too. Uh, Liability Trust Fund, uh, the, we, we talked about some settlements, and, uh, a bunch of stuff I can't talk about, but uh, the, the big, again, we're still working on, uh, uh, traffic collision reductions, and, um, everything else is trended down, and we're, there's a strong focus, uh, because of some very high payments on traffic collisions, I know Captain is, uh, is a very. I know Captain is uh is a very active on that, and they have a whole new program now where they uh, after Code Three Response is a debrief thing. That that the, that the supervisor is supposed to uh undertake, and I guess just depending on what's going on. Sometimes it happens, sometimes it doesn't, but generally it's supposed to, uh so everybody can kinda talk it up and what the issues were. Because that's kinda where the problems happen sometimes. Um so anybody ride the MetroLink, there'll be a guest conductor on there soon. That sounds a lot like me. So they, they uh, they grabbed uh uh mayors from the different cities on the way up. And so as you're going up the MetroLink, you get to do a, an announcement on that thing, so it was kinda, it was kinda fun.
I thought you were gonna say Santa Claus, remember when Santa used to come?
Yeah, I know. What are you saying?
I thought it was gonna be Santa. I think that was fun for the kids, I hope they bring that back.
Too bad, it's, it was a, was a budget thing with this.
That was fun, they should, they should bring that back, maybe we can help them with that or something.
Um we, um Mr. Partey and I flew up to Sacramento for the Tefra hearing. And we are going back up next week for the full board, and I'll let you explain a little bit better. Um the uh CH uh CHP Officer Thomas uh retired, and uh they had a very nice luncheon. And we listened to the final call uh on the radio, so that was kinda cool. Uh we had a meeting on uh s- uh some improvements and things, a discussion about the Transit Center. Um how, how we can dial that in a little bit over there. Um did a uh DS heating, uh has uh awarded some um funds to some local youth groups. We honored them over at Paloma Vista Park uh with the, some of the youth um soccer teams over there. Uh went to the General Plan Workshop, uh introductions over at uh TPAA and the Highland with some of the other council members. Uh basically thanked everybody for being there, encouraged them to have a good discussion. And we left so they could talk without having uh um having that influence of having uh elect us there. Because it's gotta get fed up through the program there. Uh I met a busload of investors uh last week, they came up here, they'd come up here about quarterly. And I got on and got to do a little pitch on the bus. Um uh they're looking at uh at um investing and doing some building and stuff out here. Uh there's uh bankers on it, there's, there's uh builders on there, there's all real estate guys, it's a whole big bus. And um and and that was uh, that was pretty cool, got to answer some questions. They uh, they were really interested on the things that are going on at the base and and some of the changes we made internally here to facilitate development. It was all very positive.
So were there any bankers in there?
Yeah, there, there, there were money guys, they were brokers, there were uh actual investors.
So did they share what they were investing in Palmdale?
That's what they're looking to do, they're looking to make that, they're looking to try to close that gap, so. A lot of this is private equity funding, uh and Real Estate Investment Trust or something like that, these investment groups. And they're trying to fill the gap that the traditional bankers aren't filling right now.
Is there any, was there any talk about building uh retirement communities or retirement homes? Cuz that's something that could provide jobs and then get people out of the homes, open up the homes for families to come in and.
I know that, I know that's being looked at over uh near district over at uh Ritter.
Yeah.
Uh that Ritter's looking at bringing in a uh, bringing in one over there. There was uh, we, we did talk about some stuff that's kind of in the pipeline, like the um, like the Assistant Living Center over in Rancho Vista. Uh some of the things going on with the airport, they're very excited about the things going along, Avenue W. Uh these guys are pumped up, they're, they're looking, they're looking for uh Av- Avenue Q. Uh they, they um, some of the people in the group have some property, Mark knows a little bit more about this. Cuz they talked a little when they, they've spoken with our, our staff about this. So they're out there trying to get the other people in their team to get the eyes on, on the issue, so uh it was good. We've had a couple of meetings with them, one of the guys is the son of the former Malibu Mayor who I was good friends with. And his son is uh is uh one of the um uh Vice President of one of the groups that puts this thing together. So it's all about relationships and building those and 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 springing them out and bringing them in, so. Um the uh, we had the ribbon cutting for uh, uh we did a bunch of ribbon cuttings around town. There's a lot of stuff opening, uh that we went down to um, went down to Acton, Acton Community Park. Uh to uh, for a ceremony uh for the uh station fire. Uh for and to uh kinda reminisce and and remember, they got a nice little memorial they did there for uh Ted and Artie down there. Um right in the corner there, so if you, it's right off of Crown Valley Road, if you go down there, it's a really nice neighborhood park. And uh and they, they've done a great job over there, so. Um so uh. Now, I went to the wire services, but let me tell you something, this last week, along with some of the people in his room. City Manager, Assistant City Manager, a lot of our staff, Building and Safety, Engineering. We've lived out there on Division and R this last week. Uh and uh I'm, I'm looking for a chiropractor right now, let me tell you. But um uh we did some overnight shifts out there, I haven't worked that late um uh in a long time. But I'm gonna tell you what, the um, the, the, the satisfaction out of being able to participate in that. And um and and to be able to look back at that project and say, I built that piece right there. I fixed that bench, I, I, you know, they didn't send us this stuff. And myself and two carpenters fabricated that cabinet, you know, cuz it didn't, you know, what the, what the designers designed. What the guy in the ordering desk ordered, what showed up on site, what they needed were four different things, so.
I don't think I've ever seen anything built that fast.
Uh you know what, and let me tell you what, every single man that was out there went home and had their wife say, you can do that in a week. What about all this stuff here at our house? So I know I heard it, so I'm gonna tell you what, the, it's gonna be, um uh they did the reveal and it was hardly a dry eye. And a crowd uh watching that family when they, when we did that, moved that bus thing, and they actually saw it. Uh and then to watch them go inside, and a bunch of us went into the video village where they were, where you could watch the monitors. As the cameras were following around the house. That was an amazing experience to, to sit there and listen to, to the comments. A lot of them end up on a cutting room floor, so we saw it raw as, and and just to be able to, to, and some of the family were sitting in there. So as, as they were walking around and the, the actual homeowners were in the house, their other family members were in a tent. And we were telling them all little secrets about how we had to make things work and stuff like that in there. Hey, look, if he looks at this, he's got some extra storage you can make underneath that bench. So it was, it was amazing, this Saturday, we're going out there, we're working again. If you're not doing anything, and even if you are, don't do it, come on out there. Uh they're doing, it's the uh, it's the uh, what do you call it, Hard Hats to Helmets Day. Um and uh you'll get a, a cool gray helmet this time. Last time we had, two times ago, we had pink helmets, and we had uh, we had white helmets this time, the next time we got uh, we had gray ones come out. So there's always builds going on, doesn't matter what your level of expertise is. Um I mean, I like, you know, two things I don't do is plumbing and painting, and I ruined some pants painting, so uh. It's one of those things I hire people for, but uh thank God the plumbers are out there, cuz I probably would've got stuck with that. But if you're not doing anything, again, even if you are, come out there, the, the, the experience is amazing. And it will change the way you look at that program, it was really, so there's a bunch of other stuff out there, but I'm not gonna bore you anymore.
Did you say when, that was when I air?
Uh I believe it's January, David, uh what, what's that?
I'm sorry?
You know, when's the date, do you know, do we know the?
No, I don't, actually, I have a meeting with Chris tomorrow and I'll find out.
Yeah, could you let us know when uh, we know, I, I think it's gonna be January, uh but uh. We, and they, they told, they kind of embargoing, we started putting, everybody was posting pictures and they asked us to kinda stop putting the pictures up. So people can see it on TV, but if anybody wants, I got a bunch of them on my phone.
One of the things kinda interesting is that they do have the.
But do it over here, sorry, but, so the millions of people at home can hear this.
Uh one of the things, I'm David Alvaro, I'm the Film Laser on for the city. Uh one of the things that was very interesting is that they positioned some time-lapse cameras all through the inside of the house and all around the build. So the whole week will be compressed into, I'm not sure how long it'll be, but it'll give really a fascinating view of all the activity. Because there were hundreds of people that were involved with this, with this project, and you're absolutely right. It was an absolutely incredible, very emotional thing to see this family get this, these wonderful homes, because they certainly deserve it. And it was just an tremendous cause.
Marines that, where they grew up together, ended up in the Marines, ended up serving in the same overseas together.
Correct.
Came home, the one guy's in uh, in Reseda, and the other one's living up here.
In Lancaster.
Yeah, and they.
And they were best friends since age three, and they married their high school sweethearts who were, and they were best friends, so they've been, they've been so close, they even share a dog. So it's kind of an interesting story.
When you, and when you, when you watch these pictures, uh the, it's things like, and you get all those, ah, all those moments. We walked through, just as they were finishing up, the pictures of the family with the kids that they, that they post on the walls, where they grabbed some pictures. And then I know uh Chris and my wife were working on a, a board that had snippets of all the emails. That the one guy was sending over when he was overseas to his wife, and they put them all on this big board, it's pretty cool.
You know, I, I, I think that those of you that know me know that the, the Veterans Housing is very near and dear to my heart. I would've been out there except I, I went, I tried to go out there and I wasn't feeling well and had, I'd just gotten over a broken ankle, it was very hard to walk, so.
There's a job for everybody in, in even, even the.
Veterans Housing has, has been a long history of problems. Um in nineteen forty-nine, my grandfather and grandmother lived in um Ro- uh Roger Young Village. Which is with the park now.
Right.
And um they lived in Closet Hut four six, uh five sixty-three. And for those that don't know, um what the government did, because there was no housing for the, the vets coming out of World War Two. They got seven hundred and fifty closet huts, they divided them in two, no insulation, I mean, these were true closet huts that these families were living in. Um and that's what my grandparents and my father and my uncle lived in from nineteen forty-nine till nineteen fifty-one. So we've come a long way.
Yes.
And for those of you that haven't seen Rogers Village, I, I encourage all of you to Google it and see the conditions that our veterans had to live in at the time. Because they were homeless, they were living on the street, they were living in cars, they had families, and they had just served their country, and so that was the solution that they had. Um so we've come a long way, and and I hope that if you have not seen Rogers Village, that you will Google that and and take a look at it, cuz my family lived there.
Uh it's almost was worse than the internment camps.
Yes, it absolutely was, so and they did the best they could living there.
Well, I think you guys are gonna give us a report on this.
Yes, yes, I'm putting together, I've got hundreds of photographs and I'm documenting it as best I can.
That'd be great.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Um alright, I'm not gonna bore you anymore, Jim?
My turn. Uh same Tefra hearing on August twelfth, uh I think Steve covered, that was the kickoff really for getting the financing. For uh the Virgin Trains Project from State Line to Victorville. Uh great support in that meeting, a lot of people came, that was probably the most they've ever had turnout for a Tefra hearing.
When they saw. Jim and I walked in there, they said, well, that's two hundred percent more than usually show up, and so you're getting a bigger room cuz a bunch more people are coming.
Uh one of the interesting things that came out of that meeting is Supervisor Levin getting that out, so he was not seeking a further term. Uh he's been a champion in the High Desert Corridor, and so we're hoping whoever replaces him remains a champion of that. Because that's really the pathway from Victorville to Palmdale. Um that was the twelfth and the thirteenth, uh flew to Sacramento, attended, to attend the Defense Community Summit. Uh while there, I met with Mark Collison, the Governor's Deputy Cabinet Secretary, uh talked to him about our issues. And uh requested uh the Governor's help in regard to the redlining, the finance issue as well, and for the Governor's Office to look into that. Uh and then I met with the California High-Speed Rail CEO and COO, uh Brian Kelly and Brian Anis. Uh talked to them about California High-Speed Rail and let them know that we'll have a nice spot at our station, ready for them when they pull up uh in the next decade or so. Uh but we're really banking on the train to Vegas. Uh on the fifteenth, we had an all-hands meeting with Extreme Home Makeover, all the contractors, all the agencies involved. And I can tell you on the fifteenth, we looked at this project, so there's no way we're getting this project built. And two weeks later, it was constructed, and so i- it was amazing really to pull all the agencies together. Uh because it was a difficult slog to get everything that we needed to get, to make sure uh they have the utilities they needed. To be fire safe and so forth, it was uh, it was a lot of work.
And six days later, it's a duplex.
Correct. Uh and then on the fifteenth in the afternoon was the Desert Mountain Division Meeting in Big Bear, uh the reception, and then the meeting the next day. On the twentieth was the B-two thirtieth anniversary, uh we attended and it was just really great to see the turnout. Thousands of people who have worked on the B-two were there, uh it was uh really something. And uh really setting the stage for the, the next, next stage in, in Northrop's evolution. Uh also on the twentieth was the EIFD workshop, um uh very good information in regard to. Uh potential finance sources for what we wanna do in the city. Uh and we got clear direction to make sure we cover the east side with the EIFD potential. And, and so we'll be uh bringing back some new information on that. Uh the same day, the California Natural Resources Agency visits, visited us in regard to a half-million dollar grant for uh urban forests along Avenue S. And uh they came out with staff, I said it's one of the best applications they'd ever worked with. And then went out for the site visit, and residents actually turned out for the site visit to tell them what a great job the city did with public engagement and so forth. And when they came back, they said that's the best site visit they have ever been on since they started this program. And so um we've really got our fingers crossed, and we did, done everything that we can to bring in that half million dollars for uh urban forests along uh Avenue S. And then on the twenty-fourth, uh we had, went to the Veterans Forum with Katie Hill uh at Legacy Commons. And then headed over to Extreme Makeover, spent the afternoon there uh with the site work. Uh on the twenty-eighth, the fire, uh the Station Fire Remembrance Ceremony. And then the twenty-ninth and thirtieth, uh Extreme Makeover again. And uh so we, we definitely got our, our work out there. And it was very, again, heartwarming to see the number of volunteers, the diversity of the volunteers, the age range of the volunteers. Uh and everyone out there really pulling for these new families that they've never met, and yet were willing to put in, you know, hundreds of hours to make this thing happen. And so uh it's gonna be, I think, an excellent show, uh and it's really gonna showcase the best that Palmdale has to offer. That concludes my report.
Great, anything else from the uh council or any uh, any items for future discussion? I just wanna make sure we're making some progress on the uh, uh some language to start requiring notch boxes for the cops. As we start getting into more closed communities. Also, um making any headway with uh uh whoever it is to fix that crossing at Palmdale Boulevard? With the trains? I'm, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna keep bringing it up every time I hit that damn thing.
Yeah, yeah, I, there's, there's the, the uh, the item that you brought up, the, the crossing, yes, we finally gotten uh resolution. And Caltrans is taking responsibility for the roughness, the, the two feet on either side of the rails. Is a MetroLink SCR uh NUP issue, and that's good. It's really the pavement that's outside of that, and that is a Caltrans, and they're.
There's one spot there by the rail where it's, where it's about that deep.
Yeah, no, it's bad, it's bad, and they have, so they are working on it, and we're, we're gonna keep pressing them on that.
Okay.
And then you brought up the other one about the arms and pedestrians, and, and we still gotta uh work with that as well.
Are you talking about the one right there off the Transportation Center?
No, no, this one right here, and this is the number one hazard crossing Palmdale Boulevard. And there's, they were supposed to be working on getting pedestrian gates that came down, and we talked about that about a year ago, and it seemed like it. Went poof, so I just wanna make sure we keep it.
When you brought it up, I had never heard that issue, but Mike Behan remembered it, and so we're, we're gonna re-energize that.
Yep, yep, so, cuz one of the things we keep talking about is um possibility of doing a no horn. And we wanna make sure that whatever upgrades they do to fix that crossing over there is also consistent with what's gonna eventually be necessary. With the fencing and making sure you get the pedestrian arms and stuff like that, alright, so.
I have a couple of things.
Right.
Um two things are just reminders, I know that last month we talked about getting a memo from the parks. Uh Rancho Vista and Yaim to see where we are uh with getting some, they're moving, I know that's coming. They wanted to remind you. The other thing, did all of you guys get a memo from um Highway one thirty-eight of Palmdale Boulevard? Uh that's something that I requested a few months ago, and it was finally um provided to me. I assume that everybody else got that memo too?
Which one is it?
The one on Palmdale Boulevard, trying to get um Palmdale Boulevard from Caltrans.
Yeah, I don't wanna have anything to do with it till they fix it though.
Okay, well, that's, that's why I bring it up, because I, I uh went through that memo, I read through it. And the uh high-speed rail, I uh had briefing as well, maybe that's something that we should consider, since Palmdale Boulevard is projected to go underground. And dealing with Caltrans, that's gonna take a while to go through that process, even though it's a state project, a high-speed rail. So I wanted to ask if you guys saw that memo, and maybe we can.
I'll, I'll have to look and see, I, I got about thirty memos in the last four days, so.
Well, basically with that, um last week, I think, not too long ago. I wanted to see if you guys are willing to discuss that, I know you're not. But I think that we can reroute, uh, Highway one thirty-eight north of the Roundabout on Forty-seventh and Fiftieth. That would give us a portion of Palmdale Boulevard.
Eventually.
No, no, no. I'm talking about Palmdale Boulevard rerouting, uh, one thirty-eight right now. Think about rerouting it north of the Roundabout to Avenue M. Once you read that memo...
You went this on as a agenda item?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. If you guys want that on, on agenda.
Yeah, well, the only problem is, is that then we end up with a pig and poke.
Once you read the memo and the, the recommendation setting, that'll make sense.
Let's, let's, uh, do me a favor. Can you, can you shoot it, shoot us a copy of that?
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, okay.
And then we can add it to a future agenda so we can actually talk about it.
Yeah.
That was my point. I have another request and that request comes with a little bit of history and I am going to be, um, venting a little bit of frustration. I don't mean to be disrespectful to staff or our, our city manager and our, uh, city attorney. And there's a history in that and I'll start with a history of two months ago when Mr. Loa brought up the bleachers over at Dominique Masari. I requ- I sent him an email to the city manager asking to see if there's something that we can do having to do with the scoreboard at the Palmdale, uh, baseball league over at Dominique Masari. Thank you, Mr. Loa, for that email, supporting that idea of looking at possibilities of making those improvements on the baseball, um, fields over at Dominique Masari. First, I ask if we could see into replacing that, um, scoreboard. I know that now they have the money to do that. They would be able to do that themselves. I also ask on a follow-up on providing additional lighting fields. Uh, on Dominique Masari, there's two fields that are lighted. There's a total of four fields. The response that I got from staff was a recommendation to not even consider that because they have two light fields already lighted. Uh, I don't know how many fields are lighted at Merrick Air, but I believe that all of them are lighted. I know it's the best of the West. I know there are competitions there. I know there is a source of revenue from those competitions. But when I read that response from staff telling me that there is already two lighter fields in Dominique Masari, it's like that should be enough for us. I really took that as an offense because we are no less citizens than the West side. Again, I know Dominique Masari is the best of the West. I know there are competitions. I know it generates revenue.
So the base, does somebody help you with that? On the baseball field though?
Okay, let, let me just finish. Essentially what I'm asking is if the council is willing to look at some possibilities of bringing some improvements over there. And then I got an email from the city manager telling me that the basketball player, Paul, what's his name? Paul George is looking at giving some more donations and then maybe we can get some of those improvements. Why should we be waiting for charity to improve the park?
So I, I, I'm, I'm with you on that. I'd like to see us get more lights out there.
Yeah.
There's been a lot of history on how we got lights out there and how we got lights at American Indian. And, uh, the, the, the thing is, is that we've got an allocation for each of those fields with the leagues. And if you, if you fix it over at one, we're already getting beat up for what...
And I know that the point of it got vandalized. I saw those pictures on Facebook that you posted. But again, my point is that if, we already have two lighter fields on the, on Dominique Masari. Why should we get more?
Is, what's the, what's the use of it out there?
So that we don't violate any rules, perhaps we can put this on a future agenda.
That's my point. We can wait to discuss that.
Because I'd like to discuss that because from a law enforcement perspective, from an analysis of studies crime, the more lighting, the better, you know, as far as reducing crime. So I'll, let's, let's make sure we put this on a future agenda so that we can discuss it and maybe have some meetings beforehand.
So the reason I bring that up is to make sure that the rest of the council members know about this issue. Because I'm told, and I follow the rules. I only see, see, uh, council member Loa thanking him for his support because he did replies in that we should be able to look at some remedies because those are good programs for our case.
You're saying, weighing in right into what my last item was. I was gonna ask each council member...
So that will be on the future agenda.
Well, let me help you with that because one of the things that we committed to was to put, put together a parks committee. So what I'd like to do is sometime in the next two weeks, I would like each council member to send me an order to people that they would like to have appointed to a parks committee so we can move forward with...
Didn't we not do that already?
No, we don't.
I think we're confusing that with the, uh, general plan.
Yeah, yeah. But specific to this, so that to, to be able to look at these types of things to help us prioritize these parks items, uh, so they can drill down into different sources of funding, what the specific needs are around the community. And so I'd like to get a representative from each of the council members so we can actually get those folks out there and, and there's people out there that want to do that work. I'm gonna be going to each of the, um, each of the leagues to, uh, to, to get a rep on that as well.
No, that's a good idea. I, I think that I was on a close up with, I would asking to do that community for the parks. Again, I don't mean to be disrespectful to staff.
I'd like to get new people. I'd rather not recycle people.
I just, I, I just wanted to vent my frustration in the way the system is because it, it's just, I, I don't see how I, you know, we can be told on the east side, you already have two lighter fields. Why do you need more? You know, uh, the scoreboard, they already have the funding for it. I understand those things, but it's just frustrating for me to wanna be able to provide something for our residents, their Palmdale residents. And that's just the way I looked at those emails when I looked at them. Again, I apologize for staff and for the city manager, for the city attorney if I offended you, but this is something that I just needed to get out of me. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Well, with that, if there's nothing else, we'll go ahead and adjourn and now we'll see. Now what's the next meeting, sir?
Turning in the memory of several...
October first. So we had, and remember everyone, we're adjourned in the memory of Ayo O'Connor, Herb Wire, C.C. Tomeche and, um... Becky, who was, there were four. Am I missing somebody? Herb Wire, C.C. Tome- Tomeche.
Ayo O'Connor.
Ayo O'Connor. Oh, Wayne Hofmeyer from the Lions Club. He, he's a longtime guy here. So Jim, when's our next meeting? Seventeenth and the topic is? Okay, so we're gonna have our second meeting in a month and it'll be workshop. If there's any other pressing, uh, agenda items, I'll be added to it. Okay, great. Thanks.